Good evening and welcome to the April 23rd, 2018 session of the Thousand Oaks Planning Commission. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and I would ask that you would all please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Thank you. Would the Recording Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Lanson?
Here.
Commissioner McMahon?
Here.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Commissioner Pletcher?
Here.
Chair Nichols?
Yes.
All are present, thank you.
Thank you. And the next is a request for continuance of any agenda item. Is there such requests at all? Okay. With that, I'll move to public comments. I don't have any public comment cards. Do we have some in the works here? All right, just a moment. Okay, so nothing for public speaking then. Okay, very good. Okay, I have my collection here, and there is nothing for public comments. Everything has to do with items on the agenda, so just to make sure, is there anyone who wanted to make a general public comment and forgot to submit a card? If not, I'll move on forward, and we'll plan that people are speaking just on the items on the agenda. So with that, we'll go to our next item, which is the Consent Calendar. I see we have two items for minutes on the consent calendar. Do I have either a motion from the Commission or... Yes, please go ahead. I'm trying to get to my page here where I can see the speakers, but go ahead. Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Chair. I just have one minor correction on the minutes of the 19th. On the first page, near the bottom of the page, has the Chair's name incorrect. It gives my name, it should be yours. So with that one important correction, I move that we adopt the minutes as written and as modified.
Thank you for that notation. Anything else from the Commission? I'm still trying to find out how to get to my speakers, but go ahead. Anything else? If not, Recording Secretary, please prepare us for a vote. Nothing appears to be showing up on our screens here. At least not mine.
Yes.
I can...
Should we just take a voice vote at this point? Are you getting close? Okay. And I don't have any speaker buttons on mine either. Okay, yes, we'll go the old-fashioned way. We're going to take a verbal vote here. So we'll just... You want to go name by name? Recording Secretary, if you would, please?
Commissioner Lanson?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pletcher?
Yes.
Chair Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We can always rely on that. Thank you. Next will be our public hearings, and would the Recording Secretary please call into the record our first item, please?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item Number 7A regarding subject: Installation of a Wireless Communications Facility for Verizon Wireless on an Existing Water Tank for Case Number SUP2017-70592. The applicant is Verizon Wireless, and the location is 2239 Peak Place.
Thank you very much. And this evening, we have a staff report by Mr. Will Chua, with some other staff along to support, but Mr. Chua, if you would please proceed with your staff report.
Thank you, Chair Nichols, members of the Commission. For your consideration tonight, it's a special use permit, request to allow the installation of a wireless communications facility consisting of 12 water tank-mounted panel antennas, base station, transceiver station, and an emergency generator to be installed within the equipment enclosure at the city-owned water tank facility. The project site is a one and a quarter size, one and a quarter acre in size, located in 2239 Peak Place and Zoned RPD 2.5U-SP. Access to the facility is through a paved driveway from Sunset Hills Boulevard and another one at Peak Place. The project site is adjacent to four residential properties on the west side, right on this side right here. Immediately to the north is a vacant lot, right here, that is adjacent to Sunset Hills Boulevard, and on the southeast side is also a vacant lot owned by the city, right here, with properties to the east. According to Verizon, the existing facility near the proposed sites are experiencing service degradation due to existing customer demand. Verizon claims that there are currently excessive amounts of dropped calls, slow data processing speeds, and general service degradation in the area. Installation of the proposed site is necessary to avoid breaching system capacity limits in the area, which would result in very poor and ineffective system. This map is showing the current signal levels at the proposed intended area of coverage, which is around these blue areas right here. The applicant is proposing to install three antenna sectors with four antennas per sector attached to the face of the water tank. An equipment enclosure will house the BTS cabinet and emergency generator, and it will be installed on the north side of the water tank. A previous application proposing a 40-foot-high fold tree on the south side of the water tank was denied by the Planning Commission in 2014. This aerial shows you the location of the BTS enclosure, which is right here around the north side of the tank. Another... This is the first antenna sector, which is Alpha. There are four antennas to be installed in that sector, same as on the northeast, north sector, no, east side sector, and the south sector. The closest antenna to a residential structure is about 190 feet away, which is the Gamma Sector on the south side. This is the proposed northeast elevation of the exposed antennas. And these other pictures shows the southeast elevation for the exposed antennas as well. The antennas would be installed at a tip height of 29 feet 6 inches, about two feet lower than the height of the antenna... Oh, I'm sorry, of the water tank. This is the photo simulation on the south side of the water tank. As previously mentioned, the antennas will be mounted on the face of the water tank. The BTS cabinet and the emergency generators will be installed within an enclosure. The generator is necessary to provide emergency power during power outages. It will be operated for a maximum of 15 minutes duration every two weeks for testing. The applicant submitted a noise study on the generator, which indicates that the generator would comply with the city's noise standards. In addition, staff is recommending a condition to limit the testing in the afternoon to minimize disturbance to neighboring properties. The city's wireless ordinance requires that antennas be attached to existing structures to minimize visual intrusion of new structures. The proposed method of installation complies with this requirement of the city's wireless standards. But in order to reduce, to further reduce visual impact of the antennas, staff is recommending that the applicant install fiberglass reinforced plastics, or FRPs, around them as required by the Condition Number Four included in the model resolution. This elevation shows the panel antennas with the FRP panel. And this is another one that shows the FRP panels covering the antennas. And the next photo simulation shows the proposed antenna screen as well. The applicant considered 12 alternative sites for this project, consisting of three water tanks and three right-of-way sites. The water tank sites were eliminated because of the terrain or elevation issues. In going for, in going for the streetlights, the applicant stated that there will be, there will have to be five sites to match the coverage provided by the project. A typical streetlight installation will consist of a replacement light pole with a six- or eight-foot-high radium on top. There will also be an underground equipment vault and above-ground meter pedestal nearby. These lights are also located very close to residences. This map shows the coverage that will be provided by the proposed site, Whitechapel. And this one is the proposed propagation for the five sites if this, that's alternative to the, to the, to the proposed site. This, it's important to note that the sites here, especially this particular site right here, is very close to residential homes or structures. This project qualifies as a Category One exemption under CEQA. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve SUP2017-70592 based on the findings and suggested conditions contained in the model resolution attached to the staff report. And with that, I would like to introduce Dr. Jonathan Kramer, the city's wireless consultant, with his presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Jonathan Kramer, I'm your wireless advisor, and I have been for about 30 some-odd years now. We evaluated this project to determine whether it complied with the FCC's rules for radio frequency emission safety. The project does. The project as proposed will fully comply with the FCC rules. Under federal and state law, where a project complies with federal and state, where a project complies with the federal rules issued by the FCC, that's the end of the exploration by the local government. It cannot be a basis for a denial. So the project is designed to be compliant with the FCC rules. We recommended, and the city adopted our recommendation, about the screening of the panels for aesthetic purposes, and I have no further comments. I have all... Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Could I just ask for a clarification? When you state that the FCC regulations is really the basis for the determination of approval or denial, could you please explain what then the role of the Planning Commission is?
Well, it's not the basis for approval or denial of the project. The FCC, Congress in the 1996 Telecom Act basically delegated national authority of the FCC rule, to the FCC, to set up national rules for RF safety. And to the extent that a project complies with it, with those rules, then a local jurisdiction, whether it be city, state, county, cannot consider that factor alone in determining whether the project is appropriate and should be approved. So the rules don't require the approval. They simply say, where demonstration of compliance is shown, as is the case here, then that is not a point of consideration that the city can base a denial upon. All of the other factors, compliance with the code, here Resolution 97-197, still come into play. You have your aesthetic authority, and that's unchanged by the FCC's preemption of RF safety issues.
Thank you very much. I'm sure we may have some more questions, but I'm going to start with the Commission here. I see Commissioner Newman has a question for us. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for your presentations. I just have one question about the equipment enclosure. Is it covered? Is there a roof over that enclosure?
At this point, no, it's not covered.
All right. Thank you very much.
Anything else from the Commission? Mr. Kramer, I had one question. I know in the past, there has been some concern expressed with RF because the antennas were at the similar elevation of homes, residences, playground areas, that sort. Is that a consideration here?
No, it's not. The RF emissions that we're concerned about, which are those which exceed the emissions that are allowed for the general population, are restricted to the water district property. And at the elevation of the antennas itself, so they're substantially above ground level and on the property, so no, there's, there's not, that's not a consideration here.
Okay, thank you. And then I had one additional question regarding the signage. Condition 14, which requires installation of the RF signage on the water tank. In the past, it's typically on sites where the telecom people would be the staff, or mechanics, or electricians, or somebody accessing the site. In this case, we have a water tank, where perhaps those staff would not be familiar with RF emissions and things like that. Is there any potential concern for non-telcom people that are working around the site that they might, might not be aware what the issues are there?
The conditions for signage come from the neurotic lawyer department, which I had. And as a neurotic lawyer, I always want to maximize public safety and protection, so we recommended the signage conditions, even though presumably district personnel will be aware of the fact that there are antennas up there. And even though they can't climb in front of the antennas, the neurotic lawyer in me wanted to make sure that was, there was still an announcement sign. This is an issue really between the applicant and the water district in terms of what rules they adopt, but that's why we recommended the signage here.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, I have a note on my screen to vote for Item 6A, and I can't see any speakers. Do we need to cast these votes, or is that something we can move past and continue on with this case? Yes. Yes. Bear with us as we advance through technology this evening. While I'm waiting to see if any of the Commissioners have any further comments... Yes, now I have 7A for a vote, but we're not quite there yet. I have nine speaker cards for this item, and so I'll be allowing four minutes per speaker. I do have one speaker card for the applicant. They will get their 15 minutes. But just so you can be ready to run on down, the following the applicant will be Barbara Griffin, then Bill Sahagian, and Brian Lent. Well, tell you what, I'm just going to go ahead and move forward with any Commission... Okay, Commissioner Pletcher, please go ahead.
We'll go back to the old way.
Yes, we're used to that. Go right ahead.
Frantically down at the...
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chua, for your presentation. I just had a few questions regarding the alternative site analysis. What is, if we have this water tank before us, what is the underlying purpose of doing an alternate site analysis? Is that something done typically by the applicant? Is it something done that us as a city request? Is there something tied into Dr. Kramer, or...
An alternative site analysis is actually a requirement by the city to ensure that the proposed site has, is the, has the best potential for a site and the least intrusive means.
Okay. So when we go through the alternative site analysis, just for clarification, Verizon, the applicant, is still believes, it says at the very bottom of our Page Five in our, in the, under that section, Verizon believes that these five sites combined would be an ideal alternative to the proposed site. They're still more willing to put it, they still want it up at the water tank, right? We're not?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted clarification on that point. That's all for right now, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further questions, comments from the Commission? Okay. Hearing none. I'm going to move to our applicant then for the presentation on their behalf. I have a card for Mr. Pete Schubin. If you could please come on down, state your name and city residence for the record, please. Yes, four minutes, the, our applicant gets the 15 minutes.
California. Here tonight, representing Verizon Wireless on this project. I'd like to start with just mentioning the conditions of approval. There's one I'd like to discuss, but all the others, including the RF signage conditions, were reviewed by Verizon and are acceptable. Condition Number Four discussed, it has two parts. It's the first part I specifically want to discuss, where we had talked to the city about screening on the water tank. Condition Number Four, the first half, is that requirement to include the screening, the exhibits of the screening, and no screening designs are included in the packets. We're requesting the striking of the first half of Condition Number Four to not require the screening over the antennas. When we've done these projects before, we have not provided screening. It was a question that came from staff of, is it possible? And we had to go back to the structural engineers who designed the mounting system to ask them, and they said, yes, it would be. The trees around this tank, and we're not disputing that there is a place for screening, as we have had discussions in the past, screening is often used, particularly in Thousand Oaks, and accepted by Verizon. In this instance, to see the antennas, you have to walk onto the property, and specifically up close to the tank, from all sides, there's trees that surround the tank. So if you were to view any portion of the facility, you'd be looking through the trees to see them on the tank, and the trees cast already a bunch of shadows and other items on the tank. There's also other equipment on the tank, measuring devices, ladders. So items attached to the tank, painted to match the tank, are not things that are uncommon on a water tank. We feel the tree screening around the tank is sufficient, in this instance, to provide adequate screening, which is why we asked the first half of Condition Number Four to be struck. There were a couple of comments. I've already mentioned that the signage COAs are acceptable as recommended by Dr. Kramer. And, Mr. Pletcher, you had a comment regarding the alternatives analysis. And yes, that's a requirement of the city to document the efforts to the city. It's something that Verizon Wireless does as part of our site selection case. We have to go find out who's willing, make sure that we could come up with a design that works, and also make sure that that's the least intrusive means to provide the service in an area. The right-of-way locations were particularly looked at, we were asked by the city to look at those and produce a plan, you know, a what-if plan. Yes, it is a viable plan. We do not feel it is a good plan. We do not feel it is a good plan because the water tank facility is superior because it has fewer impacts on the community as a whole. If we went into the right-of-way, we'd be talking about five facilities immediately adjacent to or across the street from homes. So in someone's front yard, or just outside their backyard fence, which is why we feel that the water tank facility, centralizing the antennas in one location that could provide the service, is superior in this instance. And that is, I'm not sure where the ideal wording came. I didn't see that in the staff report. It's possible, but not preferred. I'm available for any other questions from the Commission.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schubin. Do we have questions from the Commission? I don't see anything popped out yet. Commissioner Newman? I do, by the way, I do have my speaker list here now, so I can give that a try, but go ahead. Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for speaking, Mr. Schubin. Regarding the first part of Condition Four, if the Commission did elect to continue with that first part of that condition in place, would Verizon still be comfortable proceeding?
Yes, we would.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments? Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Mr. Schubin. Along that same lines, I know you may not like the screening. Is it, is there any difference in the effectiveness of the materials by virtue of the screen being there?
Yes, there's a little bit of loss of RF signal strength. It's negligible in this instance. The negative impacts of the screening have to do with the fact that the equipment that would be attached to the tank produces heat. It is designed to be open to the ambient air. So when we design a screening system like this, say on a building rooftop, where it's screened on the outside away from the public views, it's open to the air on the top, typically on the back, or even a screen wall has gaps underneath it to allow airflow to keep that equipment cool. The equipment does not require fans or any other type of... The equipment does not require fans or any other type of cooling element. It's very passive. When you begin to enclose it, the heat builds up and it becomes less effective. It degrades the lifespan of the equipment. The expected question would be, well, how much does it degrade? I don't know that answer, but it does. It also requires, if you look at the plans closely, the screening does not go all the way back and touch the tank. It stood off the tank a couple of inches on the sides. The top and the bottom are open, meaning we could put a bird netting there to keep birds from going and living behind it. But what it does is it has to maintain that open top and bottom, so the air will, as it heats up inside, the air will rise out the top. The also, there's a aspect of mounting to a water tank is that the design, and there's an exhibit in the staff report, I believe it was the last page, that showed an existing mounting on a tank. They're magnets. And what the magnets do is they mount to the tank and they adjust to the curvature of the tank, and then there's a plate. Part of the system, and one of the good things about it when you're dealing with a water tank, is it allows for visual inspection quite easily. Meaning a technician could walk out to the site and look up and see if any paint's peeling or if there's anything that's happening on the side of the tank that would need a repair. The screening would complicate that visual inspection, make it very difficult, if not impossible, to do in the areas of the antennas without sending out a crew to remove the screens. So that's, that's why we object to it in this instance. It's more of a technical aspect, possible, but added work for quite a few parties down the road of the lifespan of the site.
Some of the comments that I looked at quickly also were concerned about vandalism. Have you done any evaluation as to whether the screens diminish vandalism with regard to the units?
Everything could be a canvas. I think if there was a vandalism aspect to the tank, it would be an issue that wouldn't be exacerbated by antennas. We don't have issues, except in areas where there's already an issue, and then there becomes something that could be painted, therefore it is. What we found is people typically do not notice wireless facilities once they're installed. They're, they're just there. They become part of the environment, particularly on a tank, behind, behind a screen of trees. So we wouldn't expect a vandalism problem with or without the screens in this instance.
One last question. I noticed, and again, some concerns with regard to the generator. For every project that you've come before the city, has there always been usually a generator as part of the request?
Yes, there is. They are not every project, but most. And it is an item that we typically do discuss with you. There's a condition that has been placed on the project that's acceptable to require the testing in the afternoon hours, not early in the morning and only on weekdays. Reasonable restrictions on hours for testing are acceptable, based on the neighborhood or whatever the city would like to see, we could accept. It's important to note that this is a generator that would only run, other than that monthly test, would only run when there's an extended power outage. So this is something to keep the site functional in the event of an extended power outage. The site has batteries, and it would run on its batteries in the event, in the event of flickering or brownout or something like that. And then once the batteries began to drain, the generator would go on. It adds a robustness to the facility to continue service while there might be a natural disaster or something else that's causing a lack of service due to power. So the generators are an important part of maintaining service to a community.
I noticed from looking at the information, it said, I believe, up to 15 minutes. Is that an average of how long the noise would be?
I think that's, that's a maximum. I've been on sites when they test and they do remote test. The Network Operations Center would send the signal, test it. It would cycle. Most of the time, it is a warm-up cycle. So it's a, bring it up to temperature, everything checks out, and then it shuts down. 15 minutes would be on the outside, the long term, because most of the time, they would warm up quicker, run through their test cycle, and then shut down. There's no intent to have it run at the cost, they're quite expensive to run, to have it run any longer than it would absolutely be necessary.
And is this test something that would be self-generated, the property? Meaning somebody doesn't have to go there? It's not done remotely? It's just timed by virtue of the system itself?
It's done, it's done remotely by the system, so there would not be the need of a technician or anybody to show up onsite to remote test the generator.
Okay. I have nothing further.
Thank you. Commissioner Pletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Schubin, for the presentation. I went to, it's one of our supplement pages. I think you referenced that the picture of the antennas that are on the tank. It's towards the back end of our applicant package. And it seems like those antennas, the way they look, at least in this photo, and we've had previous conversations when you've come before us before, these seem to already be matching the color of the tank.
Correct.
Overall, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So coming back, and then, I should have actually started this way, I'm sorry. Coming back to number four, condition four of what you're looking to strike, just for my clarification and notes, you're looking for the entire first paragraph? Is that correct?
We could get directly into the language, but it's the portion that would require the screening. Maintaining painting to match would be acceptable and something we would plan on doing, whether it would be conditioned or not.
Okay. And perhaps you already answered this in lieu of some of the questions already asked, but you said you, you spoke to your engineers when the city placed this condition, and you, you said it could in theory be done. It's just, is this not typically done at your Verizon sites around Southern California?
The magnet mount system that is being used, that the Water Department has accepted for use here, like is being used in the, in the sample photograph, we went to the magnet mount company and asked them, you know, will your product support this load? And they said, we don't know. No one has ever asked. It has never been done with this type of mounting system. So they looked at the calculations, the loading, wind loading and weight of such a structure, and they said, yes, it would work. But that came from the manufacturer of the product that has never been used in that, in that fashion before, for the reasons that we discussed.
And in your opinion, if we were to keep the shroud, I'll just call it a shroud for terminology sake, do you feel, in your opinion, does it not, does it add or detract or doesn't really do much of anything considering the antennas are already the color of the water tank?
I'd say it doesn't do much of anything, because if you're going to walk up that close to the tank and trespass on the property to see it, you're going to see the antennas. Or you're going to walk up to the tank and you're going to see the screens. From off-site, the scre, the, the trees provide the screening. And there's spots, as if you're walking along the street and you look down between the trees, downslope, you, you could find views of the tank and the ladder and various aspects of the tank. But for the vast majority of the views, the trees provide screening to the tank.
Okay. Moving to, and this is just a question I believe typically this body does like to ask. Any, was there any neighborhood outreach done or any connection with the neighbors? Because one of our, at least one of my largest concerns, at least sitting here today, is I've got a stack of cards which really suggests that a lot of the neighbors are very opposed to this for their various reasons. I just want to know, did Verizon or you go out and do any neighborhood contact, outreach, connection, kind of dispel some of the reasons that these neighbors are here tonight?
We have made our contact information available to the city. Mr. Chua had mentioned that he had received one request for electronic copies of exhibits. I was copied on that email to the person who requested it. My contact information was included in that email string. We've never received a call or request for such information. And when we receive it, yes, we typically would go out and take care of those items. Not in this instance. I think Verizon at this location is a known project, as was mentioned by Mr. Chua. Different design, and it's discussed in the staff report, was proposed a few years ago, and four years ago now, five, excuse me. So there's been a history here of discussion. And those issues, we didn't receive, even though they were known, we didn't receive a request from the city nor from anybody who inquired of us to come and speak with them or even to ask a question.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments, questions from the commission? Commissioner Newman.
Regarding the concerns that are raised by citizens, especially those surrounding, I'll ask these questions of staff as well. But, but in the numerous speaker cards, we, or written comment cards we've received, and also in a pair of letters we received, there, there are some recurrent themes or concerns. The ones about RF emissions I won't ask about, because as Dr. Kramer points out, that, that policy is set by the FCC and only by the FCC nationwide. There are one set of rules nationwide, and the FCC determines what those rules are. But if we could walk through some of the other concerns raised by the neighbors, one is about fumes and noise from the diesel generator, which, as you've said, is on a maximum of 15 minutes during each test. What about, what level of fumes and noise would neighbors encounter during that, those test periods?
If staff brought up the plans, I could tell you how powerful and how large the engine is. I just don't have that information in front of me. I'm looking at, for the equipment layout. I believe you had a slide that showed that. Depending on the unit, I believe this is either a 20 or a 30 kilowatt unit. We're talking about a small four-cylinder diesel motor. If it's the 30 kilowatt unit, we're talking, I believe, 39 brake horsepower. So a, a small diesel motor. If it is the 20 kilowatt unit, 10 or 15 horsepower less. They're very efficient. They qualify, they comply with all AQMD requirements in California. So with regard to fumes and emissions, it's a modern, clean-running diesel engine, a low horsepower. We're not talking about a very large, you know, 1,000 horsepower semi-motor to turn a small generator. So would someone be able to, to sense the fumes? I don't know. As I've said, I've been by them when they've been running. I've noticed nothing noxious or particularly concerning about them, other than being right next to them, and you can hear it. The noise study says it will comply with the noise ordinance at the property line. There was a, an item that was asked. I failed to address it. It discussed, well, is the enclosure covered? And the answer is no, it is open air. The equipment is also designed to be open air. And I was going to ask, what was the, the intent of the question? Was it a visual or was it a noise? And I could, I could better-
I asked that question because I noticed a GPS antenna on some of your equipment and was wondering how that antenna would receive a signal if, if the enclosure had a roof.
Yeah, it, there is no roof, so it's not concerned.
That's how, that's how the antenna works.
That was part of the same line of question.
All right. This is, the next question really is for staff, is about security, is about fears of partying in the area and, and whether this would be more of a public safety hazard with more equipment on site. I think I'm going to defer that question to when I run through this list with staff. There's another concern raised by several citizens about the effect on property values. And I wonder if you have any data to speak to that point?
I, I can, but I'd defer to Dr. Kramer on that.
All right. And finally, again, this may be a, a public safety question for the city, but, but another concern that was raised is that of potential for fire danger. Is that something that Verizon would care to address?
With regard to fire danger?
The increased fire danger, let's say, from the equipment added by Verizon.
The equipment is essentially computers inside of a metal cabinet. There are batteries, a small quantity of batteries. The quantities of all of these items comply with all fire codes. The equipment area has, is concrete. There's nothing burn, flammable immediately adjacent to it. We haven't found a fire hazard problem with cell sites. Yes, cell sites occasionally do catch fire, typically because of wildfires or things where everything is catching fire. But nothing that would be a, a fire generator or starter.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Schubin. I have nothing more.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else? I have a couple of questions myself. Mr. Schubin, on attachment three, site plan sheet A 1.0, for those who are following. Can the generator enclosure be relocated more to the northeast corner of the parcel to extend the distance from homes on Peak Place?
No. And I could answer that quickly, sir, because we spent an extensive amount of time working with the Water District on equipment location. We, the last project had started with the equipment and the generator at the south side. We explored the whole perimeter outside the immediate adjacency to the tank, which, if you look at the property, actually it shows up on the, on the site plan quite well. A perimeter road around the tank for maintenance. And we looked at that northwest, excuse me, northeast corner, which there's a pump house there. And it looked like a great spot to put the generator. When you look at it, you say, wow, look, there's even space. Until you look at the infrastructure plans and for the Water Department, and there's pipelines and other things there that require access. So all of that space is unavailable because of that underground infrastructure that is there that doesn't show up even if you walk out there. But when you look at their pipelines and plans, there would be restrictions from placing it there. That's something we did look at and spent quite a time surveying it and taking a look at that location. Why we picked the current location was when we looked around the whole perimeter of it, of, of the tank, of where we could go, it would either be at the top of the slope and at the, at the base, kind of odd, just sticking out by itself, out on the open face, the, where the slope comes up to the tank. This location tucked behind the tank, there's a grade difference between the homes at that location. So the tank, it's kind of a valley that's formed between the tank and the slope. And so we looked at that as being a good spot. It didn't impact any of the pipelines or infrastructure, complies with the noise standards at that location. It's kind of tucked out of the way visually. You actually have to be on the property to take a look and see it. You can't see it from any of the perimeter fencing or gates. So that's why it's there. It's more of a function of what's there right now, not, oh, here's a spot, we'll put it there. All the other locations were eliminated because of existing infrastructure that's in the ground.
I suspected as much. I do remember, I was on the commission when we looked at this site the last time. And it is a better location than when it was before, which was right adjacent to the property line. I was hoping it could be even better, but I suspected as much because I saw the hydrants there. And I figure, okay, there's probably water pipes underneath there.
Yes, sir.
So that certainly makes sense. Okay. And I have one other question, but I think you've answered that. Condition number four regarding the cover. But I was wondering if what you're talking about with the heat concern, is there a mesh option where you could have more heat exchange and yet still provides the necessary, I guess, masking of the antennas?
If we leave the bottoms, the bottom and the top open, as is shown on the plans, we don't have that problem. In other instances, we put a work grating or a thin sheet perforated. In some instances, we have to actually put perforations in the face of the screen. If we don't have those openings, that's what would, the, the requirement would have to be, would be to create perforations in the screen. But as it's shown in the plans, it will function.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Pletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I realize I missed one on my, go through my questions. With number five regarding the emergency generator, I know we talked about the dates and the times in which it can run, but how often are they running tests on this? Maybe, maybe you answered it and I just missed it in the-
Typically, once a month.
Once a month. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Pletcher. Any further questions before I let our applicant representative have a seat? Thank you, Mr. Schubin. It's just as a reminder, take copious notes because you'll have five minutes to come back, and I'm sure our guests will be having a few questions.
I'll have my pen ready, sir.
Thank you. And I'm going to go to our speakers. And just before, I was remiss in not introducing our staff up here in the dais for us for the very first time. Mr. Kelvin Parker, just wanted to welcome you. He's our new Deputy Director of Community Development. And he will be with us on an ongoing basis now, so I just wanted to welcome you and thank you for joining us this evening. And, and sitting in for Patrick Heher to my left, Felicia Lieberman is assisting us as the Assistant City Attorney this evening. So thank you for being with us tonight. So we have a couple of assistants tonight that we're not used to seeing, but it's always good to have the support that we need here. good to have the support that we need here. Okay. So with that, I'm going to go first to Barbara Griffin. And as I mentioned, following that will be Bill Sahajian and then Brian Lent. So Barbara Griffin, you could please state your name and city residence for the record, And just as a reminder, all our speakers have four minutes this evening.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name is Barbara Griffin and I have lived on Peak Place in Thousand Oaks since 1985. I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposed installation of the 12 eight-foot tall panels on the water tower located at 2239 Peak Place. When we first moved into our new home with our twin one-year-old daughters, we counted 34 children living on our double-ended cul-de-sac. It was an almost perfect place to raise kids. The water tank has always been an attractive nuisance and one which, as you can see from this picture, has always been something to conquer for the young and reckless kids in our neighborhood. Hopefully, you can see those kids up there. Our children spent many, many days in the backyard of the original owners of the home located in front of the tank. So we heard from them firsthand of the many kids who were able to gain access to the tank and climb onto the top of it. What Verizon is proposing is just going to make an attractive nuisance a more dangerous Sadly, I'm reminded of the tragic death of one 17-year-old student, Michael Halsell, in March of 1996, who was critically burned by electrocution while rappelling down a 175-foot electrical tower off the 101 freeway in Newbury Park. Having worked with children as a speech pathologist with the CVUSD for 21 years, I know young people like Michael and others who will climb onto the water tank with the added danger of the 12 eight-foot high panels. Do not think anything bad will happen to them as they set out to achieve their objectives. But why would the city of Thousand Oaks set them up for disaster? The internet offers instructions on how to repel down water tanks as well as other fixed objects. I ask you to deny this request once and for all. Nothing has changed in our neighborhood since this proposal was denied in 2014, except that we now have a new generation of young people living on our street who will surely be tempted to explore this forbidden area regardless of the number of signs you post or warnings given to them by parents. It has been happening for 30 years and there is no reason to believe that young people will stop trying to climb onto the tank. And one more thing I wanted to say in response to the applicant's comment about the trees making a screen so that you don't see the panels. Several trees have died in our neighborhood. Many have died on our street, including at my house because of the drought. At least six of them have died in the park that were at least 30 years old. Once they're dead, they're gone, no screen. I think we need a better plan. I ask you to deny the request.
Thank you very much. Next is Bill Sahajian, followed by Brian Lent.
Good evening, Commissioner and staff. My name is Bill Sahajian. I live in the cul-de-sac where the water tower directly abuts homes. In this photo, I don't know if you can see that yet. There's a photo I have here. Oh, there you go. In this photo, the homeowner's property line for this proposed site for the generator is less than 30 feet. We residents oppose this installation. Furthermore, we are very concerned about the proximity of the alpha antennas. The 16-foot by 14-foot FRP shrouds will be visible and accessible on the northeast side of the tank. Just for example, in 2014, a faux tree antenna proposal noted 70 feet from the nearest property line, rejected for that reason. It's just too close to a residential area. Our homes on Ricard are 58 feet from the tower. May we please get that same consideration? After reading the proposal, I think the description claiming that the foliage will block out the visibility of the generator is misleading. If you look direct, at the direct center of this photograph, you're looking through the homeowner's fence at 3348 Ricard. The location of the generator for this project will be at that small tree in the center. It is clearly intrusive. There is no foliage or trees to screen the block of this enclosure. Furthermore, in the original proposal, I've been told that the generator was supposed to be test-run for 15 minutes a month. I thought it was recently amended to 15 minutes every two weeks. The diesel generator is going to make excessive noise, will make excessive noise, produce fumes and will be a nuisance to those in this proximity. This shows that the original estimate is just that, an estimate. And one might wonder what other amendments might be forthcoming. Regarding the consulting engineer's report, there are three key points that I'd like to discuss. One, that it's generally not possible for exposure conditions to approach the maximum permissible exposure limits without being physically very near to the antennas. Two, due to the mounting locations and the height, the Verizon antennas would not be accessible to unauthorized person. And so no mitigation measures are necessary to comply with the FCC public exposure guidelines. And three, no access within 20 feet in front of the Verizon antennas themselves should be allowed while the pertinent antennas are at operation unless other measures can be demonstrated to ensure that occupational protection requirements are met. As to point one, over the years, there's just been too many instances that all of these assertions are not only possible but probable. Point two, we've witnessed that and observed kids on the water tower looking down from the top of the towers. It's clear that there are no mitigation measures that will ensure these kids from getting too near. Point three, with these teens on the tower, how can a distance of 20 feet be enforced? These kids, they don't drive, they look for close-meeting locations, they're isolated, secluded and restricted, unrestricted. These will continue. This is a residential community. These are family homes. People with kids live here. This residential neighborhood encourages families by its very nature. So in conclusion, I appeal to you to reject this proposal and consider all the evidence here, which concludes that this project is too close to homes, too accessible to adolescent residents, and presents a nuisance and a safety hazard to its neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Mr. Brian Lent, followed by Dale Russell. Please state your name and city residence for the record, please.
My name is Brian Lent and I'm from Thousand Oaks. Like I said, my name is Brian Lent and I have lived with my wife and son in Thousand Oaks for 33 years. My family and I, as well as over 1,000 of my nearby neighbors, have joined the petition indicating that we prefer the installation of Verizon's alternative plan as opposed to the water tank facility. We agree the alternative sites would be much less intrusive than the proposed 12-panel wireless base station. These are our reasons for our opposition to this macro wireless communications facility. First, Verizon's proposal for the installation of high-voltage electrical equipment as well as a diesel-burning backup generator in a dry wooded area surrounding the water tank is a fire hazard. That diesel generator would be needed during a red flag warning condition when we lose power due to strong, hot, dry Santa Ana winds. We are all aware that the recent huge Thomas wildfire may have been caused by faulty, high-voltage electrical equipment that was in dry wooded area. Online, I have found lots of images of cellphone tower fires like these. Secondly, this installation is very close to our homes. Here are three pictures. This is my neighbor Millie's backyard. It is less than 30 feet from the diesel generator and the alpha antenna FRP shroud will be This is the view from my backyard. The water tank is less than 50 feet from it. And the generator is nearby to the east. And finally, this is my neighbor Jenny's backyard, which is about 35 feet from the tank. From her backyard, the gamma antenna shroud will be visible as well as the equipment enclosure. Thirdly, this location is too easily accessible to teens. Over the years, I have seen teenagers on top of the water tank smoking, drinking, throwing rocks, listening to music. Because the water tank is so close to my backyard, I have yelled at the kids to get down from the water tank or I would call the police. We feel that this facility cannot be secured without installing intrusive fixtures such as barbed wire fencing and bright floodlights. Lastly, there is a problem with the odors and noise from the diesel generator. This is due to the fact that the water tank and generator are very close to a steep slope. This configuration amplifies sounds and traps fumes. Moreover, I understand that this diesel generator would be running twice a month for 15 minutes in addition to all the other times that we lose power. I ask that the planning commission deny this permit for a macro wireless communications facility installation on the water tank and recommend that Verizon use its alternative solution to microcell sites that don't require a backup diesel generator. Thank you.
Dale Russell, followed by Drew Bertagna. Again, please state your name and city residence for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. I'm Dale Russell from Thousand Oaks. Last year, two Verizon wireless facilities at Newbury Park water tanks were approved. However, these tanks are not located in dense residential neighborhoods. Here are satellite views of the locations. This overlook centers on the Villa El Cero tank. A large expanse of open ground surrounds it. Per staff report, it is 500 feet or more to the nearest residences. This view is of the Whitegate tank. There are 10 homes within 500 feet of it. The staff report states, quote, "The nearest residents to the proposed facility are approximately 85 feet to the north and 165 feet to the west, measured from the water tank to the Now let's contrast those with an overview of the tank on Peak Place. Note that all these views are in the same scale. There are 55 residences within 500 feet of it. Four of the five homes that abut tank grounds have property lines within 36 to 58 feet of the tank. Our water tank has also been an attraction for teens since the mid-'80s. You might notice up here, a young man on top of the tank. No trespassing signs and barbed wire have not deterred trespassers. In addition, long sections of the block wall, which is the only separation between backyards adjoining Ricard homes and the tank grounds, are under five feet tall. Verizon's 2014 wireless request at this location was denied due to the, quote, "proximity of the faux tree with antennas, equipment, and generator to adjacent residential properties." Verizon now proposes to attach the 12 eight-foot antenna panels to the 1977 tank. Each quad panel sector would be covered by a 16 by 14 by 3 1/2-foot shroud. Verizon also states in its attachment 8.04 that it has relocated the equipment and diesel generator behind the tank. What this really means is moving them to a large, open enclosure cut into the slope directly behind a home on Ricard Drive. I strongly urge this commission to deny Verizon's large macro wireless base station request. Verizon has provided alternative microcell sites that it says would provide comparable coverage. Today's staff report states that just three of the alternatives would provide coverage comparable to the proposed site. I and over 1,000 neighbor residents prefer Verizon's proposed alternatives as the less intrusive option. Thank you.
Next is Drew Bertagna, and please forgive my pronunciation. And next would be Lisa Howe. If you could please state your name and city residence for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Drew Bertagna. I live in Thousand Oaks. I live at 2233 Peak Place. My residence happens to be the closest home to the proposed antennas. For what it's worth, my wife and I are very active in the community with years of coaching and volunteering in local schools. I have a master's in electrical engineering from USC with an emphasis in communication systems. And I've worked in the wireless industry for several years, so I know a little bit about this stuff. We closed escrow on our home in December of 2013. Two weeks later, the city made a public announcement that Verizon wanted to install 12 high-powered antennas adjacent to our property. Obviously, no one from the city let us know before we closed escrow or we wouldn't have bought the house. Fortunately, the first proposal failed. We've seen the new proposal from Verizon. From our backyard, we have a clear view of the area where at least one of the proposed antennas will be placed. There is nothing screening it, as some people had indicated earlier. We feel that it's very intrusive to place antennas in clear view from our backyard in areas where we spend time on a daily basis. We're splashing around in our pool and there's the antenna right there. The response to this statement might be that the city will plant trees on their property to help screen the view of the antennas. I think that would probably take several years to even be effective and isn't a viable solution. The antennas would be in direct view from the inside of our home if not for trees on our property. I contend that it's unfair to even consider these trees in any screening analysis since they may need to be removed in the future. Some of these trees happen to be huge and already pose a serious risk to falling on our home. Additionally, there's concerns about the power levels that would be present on our property. I mean, it looks to me like one of the antennas will be beaming right through the second floor of our home. Was this considered in the analysis or was it assumed that the energy will effectively pass over our house? I'm pretty skeptical that it's just going to pass over our house. It looks to me like it's more in direct line with our house. So where's a detailed analysis on that? So I have lots of questions and concerns there. To my knowledge, no high-power cell sites on water tanks exist in Thousand Oaks. This would be the first. Cell coverage in our neighborhoods is largely provided by the cell sites installed on light poles. These systems are much lower power than the proposed system and are barely noticeable. Why are we not pursuing this approach? I suppose the obvious answer is that the water tank antennas will save Verizon money and it's easier to deal with for them. and it's easier to deal with for them. And I'm sure Verizon assumed that the water tank proposal would not get much resistance from the community since, number one, only a relatively small number of homes will really be severely impacted. Turns out, one of those homes is mine. And number two, our neighborhood does not have a homeowners association, which makes it a little more difficult to fight these things. Anyway, I'm pleading with the council for your help. I don't want this system in my backyard in plain view. And the petition signatures from neighbors show that plenty of my neighbors don't want it either. Distributed low-power systems are already used throughout our city and should be used here, too. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next is Lisa Howe, followed by Karen Russell.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Lisa Howe and I live in Thousand Oaks. Aventura County Star editorial recently declared "An Alternative to Conejo NIMBYism." The article describes "A successful compromise reached when a housing project developer spoke with residents, listened to concerns, and made adjustments that could meet both developer and community needs." Mayor Fox was even quoted as saying, "This is a classic case study of how to do it right." We also did some community outreach regarding the proposed large Verizon wireless facility on the Peak Place water tank. We talked to people, and the community surrounding the water tank overwhelmingly prefers the Verizon's alternative plan. That is, an extremely high percentage considers small cells mounted on streetlights to be less obtrusive and less invasive. Please consider the many reasons why the proposed Verizon facility is wrong for the community. First, most importantly, the proposed site sits in a very dense, highly populated, well-established community. The water tank location does not sit on the periphery, not at all. A powerful macro cell site does not belong here. The water tank is located within many neighborhoods nestled among surrounding homes, some less than 50 feet away. Second, and also very importantly, Verizon states that "An alternative of small cells distributed throughout the area can be a potential solution and would provide, quote, 'comparable service and fill the gap in coverage in the network.'" Internet research suggests that small cells are the future of wireless networks. CTIA, a trade association representing the wireless communications industry, describes small cells as unobtrusive. One CTIA article reports that "Unlike traditional macro cell towers, which are large in size, small cells are designed to be low and tight and blend into the existing environment, making them less obtrusive," a quote. Another CTIA report emphasizes that, quote, "Placing wireless communications equipment of existing -- on existing electric utility distribution poles is important in residential neighborhoods and areas where consumers expect wireless coverage but oppose the aesthetic impact of larger wireless towers." One more quote. CTIA has also explained that, quote, "DAS, a distributed antenna system, and small cells are effective ways to improve capacity and coverage of macro wireless networks. They can often be deployed at a lower cost and, because of their size, with fewer local concerns." Third, "Streetlights do exist near open space or retail space on surrounding major streets, including Avenida de los Arboles, Herbs, Pedersen, Sunset Hills, and so on. These street lamps can accommodate the distributed antenna system." Fourth, "The industrialization of the water tank in vicinity does not fit the character of the neighborhood. Thousand Oaks prides itself on minimal visual clutter. The water tank looms large over the adjacent neighborhoods with 360 degrees of visibility and in the sightlines of hundreds of homes. The proposed facility will look industrial." The proposed water tank has already malfunctioned in recent years, causing hardship to those residing by it, and it seems an addition of this system to the tank is an undue burden to those who have already been impacted. Fifth, "Regular testing of the diesel generator will deteriorate the peaceful quality the residents have known and experienced for decades. The water tank sits in a bowl-like setting. As a result, sound travels well and easily. We can hear trains in Moore Park and Simi Valley. Tree trimmers fill the airwaves." We sincerely ask that the planning commission listen to the community's concerns and consider a compromise that reflects both the community and Verizon's needs. Verizon's alternative plan of small cells is preferred instead of the obtrusive and invasive major cell facility. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. I'm Karen Russell from Thousand Oaks. The wireless facility application asked the carrier to provide an alternative site analysis. It also asks for justification as to why their proposal is the least intrusive means of providing service. In attachment 8.04, Verizon lists nine public right-of-way small cells as a potential solution to provide cell coverage. The document states that a minimum of five on Sunset Hills, Whitechapel, Pedersen, and Arboles would be needed to provide comparable coverage to the water tank proposal. The report then states that these smaller facilities on light poles would be a more obtrusive means to obtain its goal. We decided to ask the residents of this area as to which they felt was more intrusive, microcells or a large facility. We asked not only those within the notification zone, but also residents from north of Sunset Hills to Los Arboles. 1,023 residents, including 153 Langrange parents, agreed. We find the alternative public right-of-way wireless facilities to be much less intrusive than the proposed facility at the water tank. As shown on the screen, residents of 58 local streets are represented. These include not only residents around the tank, but also those adjacent to Verizon's designated alternative sites, as well as local parents and guardians of the Langrange students. The additional listed streets were obtained from other residents walking in this area and school choice parents. Our petition with the 1,023 signatures requests the five proposed microcells that Verizon originally stated would provide comparable coverage instead of the water tank facility. This petition also acknowledges the possibility of four additional microcell sites on Sunset and Whitechapel. According to today's staff report, now just three sites, right-of-waves 3, 5, and 7, will Verizon states in attachment 8.04 that it did not analyze all streetlights in the target area search. Some residents that we spoke to suggested additional candidate alternative sites, such as these four light poles along Sunset Hills that directly overlook the target area. In conclusion, over 1,000 residents are asking you, the planning commission, to deny this much more intrusive macro cell facility proposal. The proposed project is not the least intrusive means of providing service.
Thank you. Next is Mark Newland, followed by Jackie Chang.
Mark Newland, Thousand Oaks. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. As I said, my name is Mark Newland. I live at 2266 Peak Place. My property abuts right to the water tank. My backyard has a clear view of the Gamma Array that is going to be peering down right onto my property. No trees, no nothing. And I ask each one of you, if this was your house and your backyard and you had this array peering down, how would you vote if you had a completely viable alternative that is being suggested? How would you vote? How would you vote if you were sitting there?
Thank you, Jackie Chang. And that is the last card I have unless someone else forgot to submit those. So Ms. Chang, please, your name and city residence for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Jackie Chang and I live in Thousand Oaks. Good evening, commissioners and staff. I'm speaking in opposition. I live to the north above the tank off of McCray Road and can see the tank. The tank is visible off of McCray. There is not enough foliage to cover it, so there are other areas that there is not complete blockage. I wish that there had been a preliminary outreach. I found out about this project either Thursday or Friday of last week while out walking a dog. I was unaware of the project until that point. I wonder if I'm not the person that was noted as requesting documents. They didn't make it through, whether that was an email project or something else, or I would have been happy to call Verizon. So this is all kind of a shock to me. I think I should have been alerted. I'm close enough to see that tank. I am a degreed electrical engineer, have a diploma from Purdue University. I have RF circuits up in space and down here on land, so I'm very familiar with RF work. I'm in shock if there are kids climbing on this water tank and there's going to be an RF generator up there. We're crazy. The generator that's down below is consuming 20 to 30 kilowatts of electricity, and just imagine what the kids are going to get blasted with if they're up on top of this tank. These are our kids. They may be stupid kids to be up on top of the tank, but let's not kill them off. Honestly. So anyway, I think it's crazy to put this kind of radiation risk in a place where there's documentation that children are in a place that they shouldn't be. So anyway, I would first ask you to put the antennas in a less populated area. If that's not going to work, then go to the microcells, but definitely deny where they are on top of this tank.
Thank you. As I noted, that concludes our public speaker cards. What we're going to do now is ask staff to respond to as many of those concerns as possible. I know there were some duplicates, but nonetheless. And after that, we'll have commissioners quiz you a little bit further. So Mr. Chua, Dr. Kramer, please have your shot at it. Thank you.
Thank you. As far as the first issues brought up by Mr. Schubin, he indicated that the foliage of the trees are providing camouflage for the antennas. We would like to point out that staff does not normally rely on foliage to as camouflage for one reason. During the winter times, the trees would not have enough foliage to cover it. Secondly, the antennas itself, when covered, would not be visible from the neighboring properties. Let me give you an example of an antenna that was installed on a water tank that was not camouflage, and here's what it looks like. So this is an example of an antenna, an exposed antenna that's not camouflage. So staff is firm about installing an FRP in front of those antennas. As far as the fumes and noise from the generator, I briefly spoke to the applicant and the applicant is willing to have the condition reversed, I mean revised, to indicate that the testing would be limited to once a month. As far, there are certain issues that my colleagues here will be responding to. One of them would be the security issues would be, that would be addressed by Senior Engineer Brad Russell from Public Works. The property value, I think Mr. Kramer or Dr. Kramer would be able to address, would address that as far, and as well as the technical issues. As far as the fire danger from flammable materials, when the applicant obtains a building permit from the city, the project will be reviewed by the fire department. They will be required to fill out a Form 126 from the fire department, and the fire department will review the flammable materials or whatever they have in terms of fire code. So if they comply with the fire code, then the fire department will sign off for this, on this project. As far as alternative sites are concerned, the several sites that was proposed by the, that was studied by the applicant, one of them is right across the street from the school, and this is, this light post is about 25 feet away from the adjacent resident. Others may be a little bit different, maybe about between 40 to 50 feet away. One of them actually is right at the same level as one of the property's backyard. So, and at the same time, each of these cell sites would require some sort of cabinet, above-ground cabinet to be installed, which may interfere in the right-of-way. And most importantly, a macro site like this, especially with emergency generator like this, may be able to provide power to a cell site when we needed it most in case of calamity, flood, fire, or whatever, what have you, God forbid, would happen. And with that, I would turn it over to Mr. Brad or Dr. Kramer for his response.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, excuse me, Jonathan Kramer again. The issue, sorry, I'm going to try and take this in order. Mr. Schubin talked about the fact that other sites have not been camouflaged similarly as staff is proposing. Frankly, we're trying to up our game on each project that comes forward. So the past does not give us a limitation. It gives us guidance to what has been done in the past, but you know, our goal as staff is to do what we can to lessen the intrusion of proposed sites. So that's why we proposed, and actually, the recommendation came from my office, to do the screening. Now, the screening itself actually weighs less than the proposed antennas and remote radio units, so I'm not surprised that the manufacturer of that particular system was able to clear it in terms of weight. And they may not have built a system like that before, but screening of antennas is a very common fact, as you know, from other projects that have come before you. Mr. Schubin's comments about heat are very legitimate, and the solution obviously is that, in fact, ducting the air from the bottom to the top by keeping those clear is a very valid solution. The issue of lifespan of the equipment being reduced is, that's a business issue for the applicant. It's not a factor that we would normally consider at the city because their cost of maintenance, our job is not to reduce their cost of maintenance, it's to comply with the code and the guidance that we have from the city council. Just talking generally for a second, and I'm going to turn now to the issue of the less intrusive site discussions that you've less intrusive site discussions that you've heard, both from the applicant and from the public. You've heard discussions about various technologies. We're not in the technology business. Our job at the city, and the job that we're allowed to do under federal and state law, is to determine what is the least intrusive means, and that's an aesthetics question. The aesthetics go to the number of sites, the design of the site, but the technology itself is really outside of our purview. There's enough case law and FCC rulings on that to make that very clear. So we've always focused as, you've always focused as Commissioner, we've always focused at staff on reducing the aesthetic impacts. So whether a series of multiple sites is less intrusive is actually a determination that the city makes. It's not a determination for the applicant. The city makes that determination, so that's where that authority comes. The applicant sets out that they have a gap in their service, a significant gap in their service, and then it turns to us at the city to determine what the least intrusive means is to address that gap. And the FCC and the courts have said in the past that, you know, they know that there are always going to be little gaps in service. They don't give us much guidance, unfortunately, because these are always very fact-specific cases. So that's at least some thought for you in terms of the least intrusive means issue. In terms of RF, I've already talked about RF, but the public has brought up some comments I think bear addressing. The public's concerns tonight have been focused on trespassers on the tank. The FCC's discussion on this is very clear, that RF safety protection extends to anticipated trespassers. So even anticipated trespassers have to be considered when designing RF protection systems or systems to comply with the FCC rules. So if you determine that as an issue, it doesn't offend the RF rule, it just is one of the things that you would consider. And you likely want to consider that, if at all, in terms of the testimony you've received tonight about what has actually occurred as opposed to what could occur. And again, you're going to hear testimony, or you're going to hear discussion a little bit from Public Works. Brad's going to talk about those issues. It's not determinative of the outcome here, but it is a potential factor because, again, the FCC does allow us to consider that. Finally, in terms of locations that sites might go in the right-of-way, when we talk about sites going into the right-of-way, it falls under a different set of regulations. And those regulations come from the state, specifically from the Public Utilities Code Sections 7901 and 7901.1. Telephone corporations like Verizon have compulsory access to put their facilities in the right-of-way. We cannot say no to that, but what we have is time, place, well, I shouldn't say that. There are actually some court rulings that do allow us to potentially deny, but those are very limited cases, and I don't want to make a big point about it. But in terms of time, place, and manner, the city has time, place, and manner, which we have exercised in the past on sites on West Lake Boulevard and other places. So although Verizon has proposed specific locations for their alternative analysis, those might not be the actual locations. It feels like I'm trying to, that I'm actually mucking up this process, but I want to make sure that the Commission is aware of how these parts fit together. We don't regulate technology, we regulate aesthetics. We are allowed to address issues, or the FCC requires that its licensees, here Verizon, anticipate and protect even anticipated trespassers from this process. In terms of the right-of-way, they have the right to go in the right-of-way, and if that's the least intrusive means that's determined, that's reasonable. The final thing I would say is that the courts have said it's the least intrusive means, not the least expensive means. And that makes sense, because these are facilities, whether on the water tank or in the right-of-way or on top of the building, whatever, they're going to be there for decades. So these are, these are not short-term improvements. They're going to be there for the foreseeable and even the unforeseeable future. So those are all of the things, from my perspective, that go into the mix that you can consider, and I don't know if the Assistant City Attorney has any other comments on that. She's shaking her head no, so she's going to let this one fall on me. Okay, I'll take the sword. That's what I have, and obviously, I recommend you go through and get the other comments first before you ask questions of staff.
Thank you, Dr. Kramer. Mr. Bustle.
Good evening, Commissioners. Brad Bustle in the Public Works Department. In conversations with our municipal service center, the gentlemen that do go out and services tank and maintain this tank, as far as any vandalism goes, the only ones that they were aware of occurred about 10 years ago, and it was graffiti that was painted onto the tanks. There has been a few cases where the fence has been cut, and kids have been using it as a shortcut from Sunset down to Peak Place, but that's really the only signs of vandalism that they've noted at this particular reservoir.
Thank you, Mr. Bustle. Excuse me, any further comments from staff, or you ready for questions? Okay. Do I have any questions of staff from the Commission? Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding one of the comments from the public and also from Mr. Chua about RF issues, Mr. Chua, in rejecting one of the alternative sites, you gave as a reason that it was across the street from a school, and let's see, it was, you know, 25 feet from a residence, and others, others you said are 40 or 50 feet from a residence and at the same level as a residence. We heard from at least one member of the public this evening, Mr. Britannia, who said that this proposal is at the same level as the second story of his residence. So I'm wondering if you're giving an antenna as a basis for rejecting an alternative site, how we justify having an antenna that's at the same level as the proposed site?
I'm going to begin the answer here before Mr. Chua, because I want to talk about how the transmissions operate. The transmissions are not in a 180-degree pattern. They're very specific and in a relatively narrow aperture going outwards. So the fact that someone can see an antenna doesn't mean that they are electrically in front of the antenna. So when we do the analysis, we look at not just the distance to a particular structure, nearby structure. We also look at the angles, and the antennas are evaluated, so the antennas are very well characterized. So the fact that this location might have some antennas, the gamma sector is probably the one that's, well, it is the one that is most closely scrutinized because it's the one that is closest to homes in terms of its angle of transmission. So it's hard to compare, and you shouldn't compare, the emissions from a particular site, this one, with the potential emissions from another site, because, again, each one of these is very fact-specific. And one of the things that we would do at the city as staff is always evaluate that specific question on a per-site basis. So I would encourage you not to say, "The height here, the same height there, therefore, the same types of transmissions." It's just not the case. That's my, that's my response, and I'll be happy to take questions.
Okay, well, I get, I take your point, that you're saying comparisons between different sites with different RF characteristics are not valid.
Correct.
What about this site, though? What would staff say, what would you say, to Mr. Britannia, who's saying, "Hey, this antenna is directly at the level of the second story of my home. Is the antenna designed, in this case, not some other case, but this case, in such a way as to protect Mr. Britannia's property and other neighbors? Are all the antennas designed in such a way that those specific antennas that they see are not, as you pointed out, are not providing possibly harmful, I don't want to get into the harm issues with RF, but are not providing..."
The correct phrase that you're looking for would be RF in excess of the general population limit.
Yeah.
That's the legal standard.
Right, right. Somewhat greater than random, significantly greater than random.
So the answer is, actually, two sets of eyes look at that specific question. Verizon's consulting engineers, Hammond and Edison, whose reports you have seen many times over the years, they analyzed that for all three sectors, the Alpha, Beta, and Gamma sectors from this site. And we did too. And we looked at the antenna orientation, the height. We always look at adjacent properties, and we basically came up with the same conclusions that they did, which is that seeing antenna panels doesn't mean that the emissions at a particular location exceed the general population limit. Again, if that were the case, frankly, that project would never make it to this body, because as staff, we'd be recommending denial for proposed non-compliance. And that's why, when you get projects from staff, they've cleared RF. We've had projects in the past that have died at the Saff level for that reason specifically.
All right. I think the next question may be for Mr. Bustle, or maybe for Mr. Chua. You guys can duke it out. This is regarding the public safety issue. I appreciate what you said, Mr. Bustle, about there being relatively few vandalism incidents, and those being fairly well in the past. But vandalism and kids jumping over a fence and partying all the time and making noise are two different things. Do you, does your department keep stats on that, or do you coordinate with police or fire about public complaints about that? And is there anything that can be done going forward to make that less of a nuisance since we've got, we've got some evidence from the neighbors about this being an ongoing problem?
Yes, now we do keep stats of that because we have a work order system, so if we have any problems with one of our tanks, we go out and we document that. So we do have a good record-keeping system of that now. I don't know how long ago that was when we started doing that, probably four or five years ago. This particular tank, we've had problems with kids climbing the tanks, and then probably 10 years ago, we installed cages around all the ladders, and that tended to stop people from climbing the tanks. Now, if they, if they want to climb a tank, I'm sure they can find a way to do it, but it's very difficult because the ladders are now enclosed and they're locked up, and it's very hard to get to the top of a tank. So we, we do go out to our tanks. We have cameras at most of our tanks now, closed circuit, so we can monitor the reservoir, each reservoir site.
Does this, does this site have cages around the ladders?
It does.
Does it have cameras on site?
It does have a camera.
All right. Mr. Chair, I think that's all the questions I have for now. I may come back later. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Following up on Commissioner Newman's comments, Mr. Bustle, have you seen any of the photographs that were shared with us?
Yes, I did.
The ones with the kids on the top, I mean, I'm assuming you've never seen these before.
No, I have not.
But you have, is there any information in the city's records as to trespassing in these types of violations?
At this tank, no. We have had issues at other tanks when kids do climb the tanks, and usually, there's some evidence left behind, whether it's they're throwing rocks, or there's beer bottles, or some type of trash left behind, and we have not had that at this tank.
Is there any kind of usual process where somebody will go up on the top of a tank every so often to see whether there's, you know, indication people have been there?
Our staff goes into the tanks every day, and then they also go up on top of the tank once a week.
And you said that the stairs are the, I'm sorry, the ladder is now enclosed, correct?
Yes, it is enclosed with a lock.
Is there any other measures that could be taken with regard to securing this area that haven't been taken, to your knowledge?
Not that I'm aware of. We would be open to any other security measures, but there's none that I'm aware of.
This is, I guess, more for Mr. Chua. Before tonight, how many comments had you received from residents?
As far as I could remember, I've, within the past two weeks, I have two phone calls from two different people who are, I think, present here right now, and during the onset or the start of this application, another, another one, which I communicated through phone and email.
So the, and again, I'm amazed you guys put this together. You've not seen this before tonight, correct?
No, I have not.
And again, I'm not suggesting necessarily, but is there any way that the city would allow a continuance of this hearing, to allow further evaluation of a lot of these comments?
It's up to the planning commission whether they want to continue this.
Thank you. The planning commission, it is within your authority to continue item, to receive additional information if your questions haven't been adequately satisfied here this evening.
Excuse me, I apologize. This application is subject to a 150-day shot clock, and that shot clock will occur on the first week of May. So bear that in mind. Yes.
What that means is that if it was the desire of the commission and the consent of the applicant to extend it, you'd have to have what's called a tolling agreement from the applicant so that we would continue the shot clock effect, and this is something that's allowed by, by the FCC, to continue the application past the normal shot clock date to some future date.
I had an additional question, and it wasn't raised. With regard to the time of the running of the generator, 2 o'clock to 4 o'clock, is that a standard city time?
No, it's not standard. Just FYI, when this was, this first came up back in 2014, I think I had a conversation with one of the neighbors when the, when the generator was being proposed on the site, and that, you know, it would be best to do it sometime the afternoon for less disturbance, and what I did was just carry on that, that condition.
Okay. Nothing further.
Thank you. Commissioner Pletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you all for your comments. I think the public safety issue's been fully addressed, no need to touch on that, but I certainly have the same concerns as the previous questions that have been raised. I think, secondly, if I could come back to the shroud, Dr. Kramer mentioned we're always looking to raise our game, I believe is the words he used. So your office, I believe, came up with this idea. Have, you know, I'll pose the question, I think I posed it to the applicant, but I'll pose it to you as well. Have you used this concept before, or is this a new, brand-new, fresh-off-the-press concept that we're, we're the first city to try it?
No, it wouldn't be fresh off the, off the presses. This is, other cities do camouflaging requirements. We historically have not here, and there are a variety of reasons why, but as a practical matter, because of this, you know, every site gets individual attention as to what the appropriate camouflages are. We've done camouflaging with vegetation, some of the higher sites. You'll have some projects coming forward that will also have more camouflage, even on existing sites. We're, frankly, we're just trying to up our game, so this is not something new. But normally, camouflaging for antennas on water tanks has been more along a permanent type of connection. The magnetic approach is frankly more appropriate because it can be removed to allow the tank to be painted. So that's why we're promoting that for your consideration at this particular site.
And in doing so, we ran through all the usual suspects of what we normally do with some vegetation, and we played with colors, and this is... some vegetation, and we played with colors, and this is, this is really what we feel, just to confirm, this is what we feel city staff thinks is the best option as far as camouflage?
Yes, it is. As a matter of fact, let me give you an example of where we put a shroud around a, a set of antennas that was installed on a light standard. This is on Rock Field and Bow Field, this is the North Ranch Play Field. We processed an application there that was approved by the planning commission where we require a, a shroud around the antennas. When Verizon came in, one of the neighbors who expressed opposition stated that there are no cell sites in that site, why do we want to put there? And when I pointed out there, there was one, which was the T-Mobile, he said, "Oh, I didn't know." So this is one of those issues where out of sight, out of mind, so if we have a shroud around this particular antenna, then I believe that, you know, people will forget about it and would think that this is just another, another accessory structure, I mean, accessory attachment to the, to the water tank itself.
Thank you. If I could turn very quickly to the alternative sites, just to, again, help me confirm what I believe our staff report says. Essentially, the alternative sites would be Row 3, Row 5, 7, 8, and 9. Is that correct, as far as our map goes? I think it's page 23 of 23 on Attachment 8?
Right, those are the sites that Verizon indicated that would be desirable to replace the single site, that would be Sites 3, 5, 7, 8, and 9.
Okay. In terms of this particular meeting tonight, was there any notice that went out to the neighbors and residents of these alternative sites to let them know that although there is a chance that a cellphone tower may go up on top of a light post, I just wanted to see if there's any neighborhood involvement there, or did we specifically focus really on the, the Whitechapel Water Tank?
No, the notification is strictly focused on this particular project site.
Okay. That's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes, thank you. Excuse my voice. I want to understand a little bit more about the, the shot clock process. Who puts that in place? And does it mean if we would deny this, they, they don't have time to do the alternative sites? Does that mean that this is over? I don't understand exactly what that means.
I wish the answer was clear and easy, but let me give you first the history and then the effect. From 2000, I'm sorry, from 1996 to 2008, there was no shot clock. Congress said, basically, local jurisdictions have to act on applications in a reasonable time. In 2008, the FCC helped us by telling us what a reasonable time was, and they created the FCC shot clock. That shot clock's been upheld by court, so it's, it's, it is the regulations of the land. And essentially, the shot clocks now, after some changes at the FCC, are 150 days for new sites, 90 days for major modifications, and 60 days for certain types of less major modifications. The rule at the FCC has been that if a jurisdiction did not decide an application within the shot clock, an applicant had 30 days to file a lawsuit to compel the city to make a decision. Fast forward to 2015, and Assemblymember Bill Quirk up in the Bay Area decided that, at the request of the industry, that that process needed modification and clarification. So instead of, I'm sorry, I misspoke one thing. Let me go back. For the minor modifications, the FCC said that if we didn't decide those decisions within 60 days, then the project was deemed approved by operation of federal regulation. Okay. Fast forward to 2015, Assemblymember Bill Quirk up in the Bay Area said, "Well, gee, if, if it's approved by operation of law for certain types, why don't we extend that to the other two types, including the type you're considering tonight?" So he sponsored and, and was passed into law, Assembly Bill 57, that says essentially, if we don't act within the shot clock, and absent a tolling agreement from the applicant, the project is deemed approved by operation of law. All types. So the result tonight is that if it was the commission's wish to extend this project to the next hearing, you would extend past the shot clock, and absent an agreement from the applicant, the project would be deemed approved. So if it is the will of the commission to request the applicant to extend the project, you would also need to ask the applicant to extend the shot clock, which is within their authority, to make sure that Assembly Bill 57 does not operate. Does that answer your question?
Yes, but it leads to another one.
All right.
So if we don't want it to be automatically deemed approved, can we just not approve it now?
If you have the findings to, if you believe that you have the findings to disapprove the site, that is one of the options within your purview tonight.
Okay.
So you're, really, your options are to approve, disapprove, or to toll. Those are really the three, and one of them requires a tolling agreement.
I see. Thank you very much. I have one more, one request of the chair. The speaker cards were passed out, and two or three of them had names, and nothing was written on them, and there was no box checked. So I didn't know if they were for or against this, so if maybe we could do like a thumbs up or a thumbs down, maybe call their speaker, the statement card's names, and, I mean, somehow figure out if they were pro or against.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. Normally, I wouldn't at this stage, but because the courts require that we make decisions on a written administrative record, which includes this hearing tonight, a thumbs-up, thumbs-down approach wouldn't work. You'd actually have to have...
No, no, I was talking about just the speaker cards.
I, I, I understand, but if there's no thumbs-up, if, if you're simply asking from the audience for them to indicate, you'd want to reopen the hearing to take their testimony specifically, so that you have a complete administrative record as to those cards.
Okay. Thank you, I'm sorry about that.
Yes, I did notice several of those. I was going to quiz those folks when we get a chance. But thank you for bringing that up. Commissioner Newman?
Thank you. Dr. Kramer, I've got some, just one question about RF coverage with regard to the alternative sites. When we kicked off the staff rebuttal, you asserted that we don't regulate technology, we regulate aesthetics, which I think is a nice, neat way of summarizing what's before us here. Is it then an accurate statement to say that it's not really for this body to decide whether the assertion made by several members of the public that the collection of alternative sites, ROWs 3, 5, 7, 8, and 9, would provide equivalent coverage to what Verizon has proposed? That that is out of scope? That is not something that would be for this body to determine? Or is that, is that fair game for us to consider?
It's fair game because the applicant has provided you with information that says essentially there is an alternative, although in its opinion, the alternative is not the least intrusive means. So it, it's, it's in the record for you to consider and evaluate for whatever merit you assign it.
Without getting into the question of intrusiveness or not, are you able to say whether that collection of alternative sites would provide roughly equivalent coverage to what's proposed in the application?
Commissioner, we didn't look at that alternative. We, we looked at the alternative analysis, but we, I can't comfortably tell you the answer to your question at this point.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Kramer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions from the commission? Commissioner Lanson?
Sorry we keep coming back to this. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for letting me go again. With regard to the alternative concept in the, the documentation, I mean, I'm concerned also that people that may be affected by that are not here. Would we need a planning commission meeting to allow or consider that alternative concept for the, and allow those people that are nearby a chance to be heard?
Because these are all located in a residential area, each of those sites will have to be heard by the planning commission.
So how does that affect the shot clock?
The problem that you have is you've got a project, you've got a set of alternatives. The alternatives are at best in a incoherent state, so this is one where you would want, if that was the desire, you'd want to send this back to staff, presuming that the applicant agrees, with direction for them to, to fully flesh out the alternatives, and then bring it back to you at, at a date that would be scheduled in the future. And it'd be scheduled in the future because, for the exact reason you've indicated, there's no notice to the public of these alternative sites. So you would effectively put it back into the process.
Does that fit within the shot clock concept you're saying?
With the consent of the applicant, the answer is yes. The alternative, the alternative would be to deny without prejudice, to allow them to go back and, and apply. I'm looking for this, for the Assistant City Attorney's input on this, but to allow them to apply for the alternative site if your decision was not to approve this site.
So whether it's a continuance of everything, or a consideration of the alternative concept, we need the applicant's agreement on the record to that concept, and a continuance to toll the limitations period, right?
Anything that involves a continuance would require the applicant's consent because of the shot clock. A, a determination to deny with instructions to explore the alternatives that they've said are viable would not require that, because that would be the end of this particular process.
So, Mr. Schubin, get ready. But the, the main thing we're doing tonight that is saying yes or no to just the water tank concept, again, unless he agrees to some extension, correct?
Yes, no, or toll.
All right. Thank you.
And I would agree with Dr. Kramer with respect to that. So if the inclination of the body is to deny the project, we would have to develop findings that would support that position, to send it back to staff to look at those alternative sites. And perhaps it would be under, under finding number five, we would have to alter in order to do that, if that was the inclination of the body.
Thank you, Ms. Lieberman. Any further questions of the, from the commission to staff? Just one point I'd like to make. Being the chair, I get to hear what everybody else has to say, because I always speak less. The disadvantage is they ask all the questions that I don't have much left to ask, so I think we've covered that. I did want to point out, though, that we're not immune, as commissioners, to cell site locations. I have one just behind my back fence, and I know we heard a case not so long ago where Mr. Lanson was in the proximity of one, so we share your, your grief, and we also share the benefits of that, so we're part of the community likewise. So with that, I'm going to go back to the applicant, Mr. Schubin. You have five minutes to address the concerns as best you possibly can. Please, again, state your name and city residents for the record.
Pete Schubin, Sequoia Deployment Services Office in Lake Forest, California. Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners. A lot was said. I think the, most of it was answered by staff, particularly with, with views, with the finding that the standard is not that something cannot be seen, it's that is camouflaged. Is it the best location, the least intrusive? This comparison seems to be being made directly to the small cells. The small cells are, better put, the sites in the public right-of-way. There was some discussion regarding information found on the internet regarding small cells being better. A small cell is, is a, is a legal term in the state of California, so let's specifically talk about right-of-way sites. Sites in the right-of-way, as has been done in Thousand Oaks in the past. We're talking about five streetlight replacements with a radome on top, a vault, a meter pedestal, as discussed earlier, directly adjacent to, in front of, or behind someone's home with access to the equipment in that location. There's a very close proximity between that vault and the antenna pole. You cannot put it a couple hundred feet down the street, it has to be right next to that antenna pole, and right next to, say, 50, 60 feet. If you exceed that, what begins to happen is the cable lengths get too big to fit inside the light pole. There's a whole bunch of other technical issues. And those sites exist in Thousand Oaks. They've come before you in the past, you've approved some, you've denied some. What's key about those sites, and whiz, when they have come before this body in the past, they get, Chair Nichols, as you mentioned, not immune to cell sites, they get the same public type of, public comment that this facility gets. So is it more intrusive to put them in the public right-of-way closer to homes? Yes, because that impacts, instead of one location, which is as far as we could get antennas from the house, from residences in this neighborhood, it puts it next to five residences in very close proximity. And we have had that discussion before, where you said, "Is this as far away as you could get it?" And the answer's been yes, because of the situation on those particular projects. Here, when asked that question with right-of-way sites, the answer would be no, because we have a viable location up at the water tank. And I know we would have that location if we looked at five individual cases that were noticed publicly. What's also key is there was some discussion regarding, you know, is this equivalent coverage? The answer is yes. Those sites, at those, that power would be equivalent coverage. We're not talking about small cells with very small antennas, like a two-foot antenna with what are called MRUs or micro RRUs that operate at a very low power, which is the stuff that's discussed on the internet. What we're talking about is the vault, the replacement, the tall radome. We're also talking about no generator service. So in the big picture, small cells are a complement to a macrocell network, meaning you have spot capacity issues at an intersection, a shopping center, something like that. You'll have your macrocell network that provides the coverage in the area that has generator backup, that has all these things to make the network robust, reliable, in the time when you really need it, say, in an emergency situation. And you have small cells to pick up that extra capacity that you need. And so in the event something goes down, the small cells go down, the macrocell provides the coverage, people have reliable service. Those are key components in a network. Even though the small cell design, the right-of-way design here, would provide comparable service, you would lose all those aspects, the robustness, the reliability, the backup. You would increase your maintenance visits, and you would put those right at someone's house, not on a property where there already is maintenance visits being made by the water department to maintain the tank. So can they be looked at directly? I think it was a key component saying, "Had they been noticed," because it is also something that's been proven in the past, is, "I'm going to oppose this now, then when you propose the other alternative, I'm going to oppose that alternative," because that is what's before the commission at that time. We don't have to look ahead to say, "Will people oppose these, microcell facilities in the public right-of-way?" We could say they will, because history has shown us that they do, and many have been proposed, with direction to do the opposite here. Go out of the right-of-way, find a property where you could put a macrocell. So the argument changes, and it gets reversed, and we've all been through that, sorry. With regard to the, I see I'm out of time, so with regard to the tolling agreement, would we agree to one? It, it depends. It depends on what the purpose of the tolling agreement is, and if the commission would explain what the purpose of the tolling agreement would be, I could make that, give you that answer tonight on behalf of Verizon Wireless. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Schubin. Commissioners, we have some questions for Mr. Schubin. Commissioner McMahon?
You were talking about each, each small cell would have its own, excuse me, its own box. How big would those boxes be?
If you take a look at the equipment enclosure, the equipment enclosure is, is the equipment with its required clear space. We would be talking about a vault that is...
We would be talking about a vault that is close to that in size that would be placed in the public right-of-way. So it's a, it's an equipment room, basically, that's put underground as, as has been done with the city in the past, with a hatch that opens up on the sidewalk and the technician goes down into the ground, into the vault to take care of that. So it's a large structure, off the top of my head, about 16 to 18 feet deep, typically 11 or 12 feet wide by 16 feet long. The structures above ground, as was mentioned, a meter's pedestal is required, venting, they are items that do have, because you have air exchange that has to go to remove the heat from the vault, you do have venting that takes place. And the city of Thousand Oaks and the carriers have, have long settled that they would be the flush vents to grade that air. One is an intake, one is an exhaust, and it blows all the time and it flows all the time, creating a little bit of noise. We could comply with the, with the city's noise standards, but it is not by any means silent.
So visible to the public, above ground?
Yes, ma'am.
What, what would we see?
Meter pedestal, let's call it 18 inches square by three and a half or four feet tall. And the pole, the light pole itself, would get thicker, about 50% wider typically. And the radome up on top would need to be larger. And as I believe the city knows from an AT&amp;T facility up on Sunset, that the old design of very thin radomes does not work anymore to get the necessary antennas, and they're getting very larger. And I mentioned that AT&amp;T site because we've had discussions of why for the past four years the radome hasn't been placed back on that facility. The answer's simple. It's the antennas that are needed today don't fit inside those narrow, thin radomes. So we're looking at a two-foot wide diameter radome up on top of a utility pole, or, excuse me, a light standard that would be approximately eight feet tall.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Schubin. Appreciate your time and, sorry, oh, do I have one more? Okay. Commissioner Newman, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Schubin, can you comment briefly on the question I asked of staff, which is not with regard to the intrusion levels, but, but rather with regard to the coverage levels, comparing, uh, coverage from the proposed application compared with the multiple small site alternatives? I think these were ROWs 3, 5, 7, 8, and 9 in the staff report.
This answer comes from the radio engineers who have stated that it would be equivalent coverage, not the same, but equivalent, and with those parameters I've discussed with the vaulting and the antenna sizes.
Right. So more, more intrusive for the reasons that you've given?
Yes, sir.
But equivalent coverage?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Schubin.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Before I close the public hearing, I, I need to hear from three people who submitted speaker and/or written cards, written statement cards to get your position. Mr. Bartonya, I think I know your position, but I need to have you come down to the microphone and state it for me, please, because on the speaker card you did not mark either favor or opposed. You need to state your name, city residence, and your position, please.
My name is Drew Bertonya. I live in Thousand Oaks, and I'm against the proposed water tank antenna system.
And may I have your permission to just check that box on your card?
You may.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. And next, I have two written statement cards, and I know you're probably not wanting to speak, but I need both of you to come to the microphone, please. Mr. Bill Blaney and Agard Henny, are you still in the audience? I have Bill Blaney and Agard Henny. So Agard Henny has left, okay. If you could just state your name and city residence and whether you're a favor or oppose, please.
My name is Henny Agard, 3323, Ricard, Thousand Oaks, and you may cross the box off of opposed.
Thank you very much. Okay. With that, I'll just note that we had 20 statement cards, 19 were opposed, and one was left unmarked. And with that, I'm going to go, oh, excuse me, I see Mr. Pletcher's name popped up. Please, Commissioner Pletcher.
Sorry. I apologize, Mr. Chair. I did want from a, in speaking with the Assistant City Attorney, if the commission, I wanted to pose the question to the body that if we are actually considering the tolling and putting, um, to the scope and extent of what we would like to accomplish and kick down the road essentially, we need to, I believe, to have that discussed and come up what, what we need to, to present to the applicant for him to make the decision yes or no before the public hearing is closed, or else we'll essentially have to have the discussion, reopen the public hearing, go back to him anyway, just to possibly save us a little bit of time. And for a cleaner record, I'd pose that to the commission now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pletcher. Point well taken. We've done that before and there's no, no problem with that. So I'll withhold closing the public hearing for now and go ahead and just ask commissioners of those who care to speak and particularly on this one issue, but if there are other issues that you need to have further clarification on, but I think specifically where it comes to whether or not we want to move forward, if you're firm on a position, if you're not, want to extend time, if we need the concurrence from the applicant, I'd like to hear from you. Anyone care to go first with that? Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Schubin, I think you raised a legitimate argument of if we're simply looking for tolling with the idea that the other side's going to say the opposite, I can appreciate that comment. What I firmly believe in is transparency and having everybody have an opportunity to come here and voice their opinion. Before tonight, we didn't know about this. We didn't know about these names. We didn't know about petition. We knew there were two phone calls. I think there are thousands of potential customers here who would like to have the chance to talk to you and talk to us and not just the ones that are here, but the ones that are related to the other cell sites that might be going up. And again, I think the, what I try to follow is, again, a certain sense of transparency and make sure everybody has a chance to be heard and we understand all parent issues that may exist. For instance, on a wire, on a cell tower, we've, I think the commission looked at beforehand, we actually had one where the residents didn't want trees blocking or around the water tower. They actually were in favor of it, and they didn't want any trees because it didn't match the natural landscape of the environment. So again, it is a case-by-case situation, but because it is, I think it's important to make sure that everybody has a chance to be heard because ultimately, right now, if we had to decide this, it's basically the good or bad of the people sitting here versus the good and bad of the people who aren't even here. And that's an extremely difficult position to put me in, to have to defend a whole bunch of people who aren't even here yet as to what they may say or what issues they may be going through. So that's my thinking.
Thank you. Commissioner Newman?
I, I want to endorse Commissioner Lanson's comments, especially with regard to transparency. We've certainly heard from, from many residents in the immediate area, and as he said, we have not heard yet from the, I think it's 1,023 others who may have something to say on the issue. The one concern I would raise is that I don't want to end up in a place where we're weighing the current proposal, which has pretty significant local opposition against, pretty significant local opposition from five other sites, each of which has some concerns of its own. But I think as Commissioner Lanson has said, we're in kind of a difficult position here with the shot clock going. We've kind of got a gun to our head, say, forcing us or seemingly forcing us to do an up or down vote on one proposal without really considering all the alternatives. So for the reasons that Commissioner Lanson has raised, I would, I would favor some kind of extension that at least looks at the alternative sites and weighs them and their disadvantages, and there are some, against the current proposal. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to, I think, facilitate what the, the applicant had mentioned is that he's really looking for, and I mean to speak on your behalf, sir, I just, I want to make sure we're very clear on what we're asking you in consideration of the tolling agreement. But I just had a question for Commissioner Lanson, just in terms of going back to the thousand or so residents to have that discussion, are we asking Verizon and the applicant to go back and do an outreach locally in the neighborhood around the water tank? And, and perhaps this brings in Commissioner Newman's comments, and to go back out to the five sites and do an outreach there? I just want to help understand, clarify what we're asking the applicant to do before I can really make comment or support or, or oppose what we're asking the applicant. So perhaps a couple clarification questions to my fellow commissioners may help facilitate this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes, I, I do agree with my fellow commissioners. I, I feel like if we're going to make a decision, we, we need to know more information about what the public feels about the other sites. I feel like I want to know more about the other sites that would actually be picked. And I'm not sure at this point, based on everything, that I could make a decision. So I'm hoping that we can extend this.
Thank you. Question again for, Ms., Dr. Kramer, I believe. What is the difference between, or I guess, maybe you're speaking on behalf of the applicant because I'll, I'll quiz you on this. If the commission decided to, to deny, which ends the shot clock, the applicant then has some decision to make whether they pursue the alternative sites or reconfigure perhaps this existing site in some fashion, which they've already done once before, as opposed to reaching a toll agreement, extending it, requesting more information, which is, again, about those alternative sites? Is there an advantage one way or the other, either to the city or the applicant?
I won't comment about who gets what advantage on the process because there are many factors that go beyond just a, a top analysis. If you were to deny tonight, the applicant would effectively have to appeal this to the city council. And the reason I say effectively have to is that if they fail to complete the administrative process, they will not have certain court rights. So if you deny tonight, this would most likely, unless they wanted to abandon the project, go to an appeal to the city council.
And at that point, again, it's up to the council's decision, and if they in turn deny it, puts them in that same position, or if they approve it, then they move forward.
Well, again, just like you, the council has many options. They can deny, they can appro, they, they could deny the appeal, approve the appeal, they could send it back to this body. There are a number of things that they can do as well.
Okay. Mr. Parker, you look like you have something you'd like to chime in for?
Not at this time. I believe Mr. Kramer responded.
Very good. Thank you. I'll just pose this to my fellow commissioners. I'm not sure what additional information we would gain other than for the alternative sites if we were to extend this. So I just suggest, you know, whether we deny it outright and let the applicant, you know, move forward at their desire, which, which would seem to be going to an appeal to the city council. Because I don't think we're going to gain any more information about this site, it would just be about the alternative sites. So at that point, it's just, we're moving this one aside and putting it in the applicant's lap and saying, you know, if you want to solicit the, the information from the other sites to move forward, give us information, alternatives, or they can move to city council. So I just pose that as perhaps something to consider. Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. But you mentioned earlier that you'd been on the commission at the time the first proposal was rejected. Can, can you fill in a little bit of context around what, why that proposal was rejected? And was there a direction to the applicant at that time to come back with something different or look at alternative sites or, how did, how did that one resolve?
Well, Mr. Chua did have information that he included in the report, but my fading memory, what I recall is that because it was a different situation, it was a faux tree.
Yes.
We had not approved previously any faux trees before. So there was some hesitancy to move forward because it was precedent-setting and, so we're a little concerned about that. Secondly, as I mentioned, the generator was right adjacent to the property line, to some of the neighbors on Peak Place. I don't remember which exact neighbor it was. We're concerned about that proximity. And then the idea was just the, the overall proximity in the adjacent, to the adjacent homes, that it just seemed to be a little bit close.
Okay. So at least one finding for the rejection was on aesthetic grounds rejecting the faux tree.
Correct.
Was there a direction to the applicant in, in making that rejection to, to look at alternative sites, or was it just come up with something different at this site?
That I don't recall. I don't remember that there's any specific direction.
Okay. I, I'm, I guess I'm sharing Commissioner Pletcher's desire for us to come up with some clarity on what, what specifically we'd, we'd like to come out of this, whether it's, we're saying, hey, we'd really like to go with the alternatives instead, so let's look at those, or let's just do a straight up or down vote, as, as I think you proposed on this, and have, if the applicant wants to appeal that, let them do that. I think those are, those are two clear choices. If there are others, I think we should consider those as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The reason I also was looking at tolling was to make sure we're all on the same page. And for instance, the petition that was submitted, the question that was presented, I don't know if it's entirely accurate because it indicates the possibility of other installations besides the one water tank. I don't know if that's actually accurate. So the reason for the tolling and the, the continuance is to make sure we're all talking about the exact same proposition. We're all on the same page, talking about the same thing. It's apples to apples. As opposed to denying it now, my concern is that it's going to start a process over again and not allow the opportunity for, again, the transparency and community discussion, hopefully towards the same question, as opposed to having them go through the process again. I definitely appreciate your, your, that thought process, and again, it would put the burden on them. But again, to give Mr. Schubin the concept and to answer Commissioner Pletcher's question, public outreach is, is great, and obviously your phone number was available and you were, you were available to take comments, and please, reach out to him if you'd like to. But I think just basically to make sure we have a continued hearing on the same issue, that everybody has the same question, I think would be a better way of addressing it at some point and make sure we're all working together.
Thank you. Commissioner Pletcher?
To answer Commissioner Newman's question, in addition to, I pulled up the minutes from 2013 and, or, excuse me, 2014, when I was looking through this project, and two of the other big points was the aesthetic impact cannot be sufficiently assessed due to questions regarding the accuracy of photo simulations. Applicant failed to demonstrate that the proposed number of antennas was needed to meet the coverage area objectives, and the applicant has not thoroughly evaluated alternative sites that provide a reasonably equivalent level of communication services. But I certainly would, as much as we'd like to discuss that, I'd caution the commission because, because we don't want to confuse the two applications and possibly have anything previously decided on by this body come back and, and corrode any of our decision-making here tonight. But it is a very important point, and I, I wanted to make sure to look that up to better understand why in 2014, when I was not on the commission, that we have previously denied this process. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Lieberman?
And I would just add that if the commission decides that it wants to deny the project, it's going to have to form a legal basis as to why that project is being denied. And, and Dr. Kramer can expound on, on the bases for which you have the right to deny the project. But we want to be clear that, that it's not meeting the code, it's not meeting, it hasn't done an analysis for other alternative sites, which it seems that they have, but once again, you can make a different finding, that it, it doesn't comply with the telecoms act, telecommunications act. There, there are a variety of factors that you need to consider and make a legal finding to justify that denial. It's not just, well, we're going to deny it so we can kick it up to the next level and have the city council handle it because we have a strong opposition. You have to have some factual basis in order to support that. And I will let Dr. Kramer expound upon that a bit more.
Responding to the Assistant City Attorney, I don't want to put, I don't want to put facts in the record here, but simply advise you the types of things that you might consider if it is your desire to deny- if it is your desire to deny the project. And they, again, would be aesthetics. You would want to articulate aesthetic grounds for your denial. You would want to cite to perhaps testimony you've received here tonight, whether the project is as represented by the applicant aesthetically and the impacts of it. You might wish to talk about whether you think that this is the least intrusive means. I would not cite to any previous decisions on the project, because those are really historic. I'd limit your discussions and comments to what is on the record before you in this case tonight. In terms of the RF safety, it's a mixed record. And personally, I would be concerned about citing anything on RF safety, because I don't think you've got a record that shows a potential for noncompliance. I would caution you in that one specific area. So realistically, you should limit yourself to the totality of the evidence, the factual evidence and the testimony presented to you here tonight. And you don't all have to have the same reasons. You can each have different reasons if you wish, because that becomes the totality of the decision that you're all reaching tonight. You're not required to have a single, or all of you agree on all of the bases for it. And again, I think you look to what is in the evidence, the record before you, the state of that, and limit your comments to that. I can't be more specific, because I really don't want to take you in a particular direction out of fairness to the applicant and the public.
Thank you, Dr. Kramer. Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I concur on the RF issue absolutely. However much any of us might be concerned about that, the FCC explicitly takes that out of the hands of state, county, municipal governments. The FCC is the sole jurisdiction on RF safety issues, period. That's just out of bounds for us. And they'll remind us if we don't, if we try to act on that. On the past context, I appreciate very much Commissioner Pletcher looking that up. I'm not suggesting that the cases are comparable. They're not. I'm looking for context around what decision we make about this case tonight. And on that point, I would request a bit of clarification from Commissioner Lanson. If on the tolling option, if we don't go, if we don't reject the application and we don't approve it, but instead go to the tolling option, you said something about having everyone being sure that they're addressing exactly one thing. The petitions we receive from the public are pretty clearly opposed to that one thing. So what is, what, in your mind, what one thing is it that we would be addressing? Is it this, just the water tower proposal? Is it that versus the alternative sites? What one thing is it that we'd be looking at? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Lanson, you're on.
I just want to make sure that the question that was presented was actually an accurate question that everybody understood and had a way of saying. So for instance, when it says the possibility of additional facilities, I don't know if everybody that answered the questionnaire understood what that meant in the context of the question. And again, both sides in terms of where the facilities were going to go. So it's just making sure that the question was understood by everybody in a way that was clear. Because I doubt they read all of the materials like we did. So just basically saying how it was presented was going to be the issue.
Thank you. Commissioner Newman. Oh, okay. Okay, I see no more commissioner requests here. So I'm going to ask Mr. Schubin, if you would please come to the dais, or actually the podium. You've heard a little deliberation here, and it appears as though the commission is leaning towards some type of an extension, which would require tolling, a tolling agreement with you representing the applicant. And it appears as though the general feeling is gathering more information about the alternative sites as a, perhaps an option to the macro, the micro sites in lieu of the macro site. So with lacking any type of specifics, do you have the information that you would need? You said it kind of depends on what the situation was. From what you heard us say, my quick but short attempt at a summary, do you have what you need to make a decision? Or at least to give us an inclination of where you might be?
Pete Schubin, Sequoia Deployment Services for Verizon Wireless. No, I'm still unclear on exactly what the commission is asking. If the commission, is the commission asking for more information on the individual sites? Meaning, the identify, the locations are identified in the application materials? There's photos. Are you asking for photo simulations of those? Are you asking for public thoughts on those individual locations? There's been a lot of deliberation, which is why I'm asking. I'm still unclear with what the purpose of the tolling agreement would be. And to give you a little clue, the answer won't be no. It depends on how long of a tolling agreement we would agree to. So you can see where this would go, kicking the can down the road, as the comment was mentioned earlier, months and months and months. And we would end up, if I was a betting man and had to lay money on something, it would be on that we would have, as Commissioner Newman, I think you mentioned, we'd have a group of people in opposition to five sites arguing against a group of people in opposition to one site. That is where this may go. And that's what I don't think is, the commission's goal is to have that. It's to find out specifically what the, Commissioner, you mentioned a good point. When you read that statement on the petition to me, I was wondering why that wasn't included in the record. Staff is usually very good at a phone call saying, oh, by the way, on our website is all the public comments, you know, printed out, read it. I did not get that, that call or that email, as I usually do, which gives us an opportunity to call back the public, because it would have, you know, who it's from on it. And that site you mentioned where the neighborhood didn't want trees, that was news to me when we presented that project to the city and to the commission. And that neighborhood, we actually had extensive discussions with, not with regard to a formal community meeting. But they were very active in calling, in asking questions, in discussing the pros and cons of the site. So we're used to that type of exchange. With that said, I'm still unclear with what the commission is specifically asking for, because I will provide that. And that answer that I'm looking for will give me the opportunity to convince or to present to you the timeline we would need to accept and agree to on a tolling agreement. So would that be 30 days, one meeting? I don't, I'm not saying two weeks and we're back. You know, a month or two, depends on what I'm being asked. And we would work diligently to provide that information.
Mr. Schubin, thank you. If I could attempt to summarize, and if I misspeak, please, my fellow commissioners will correct me, I hope. The general inclination is that there's been a proposal, so to speak, implied that alternative sites may suffice in lieu of this macro site. And I believe the commission's concerns, perhaps most best addressed by Commissioner Lanson, is that those folks who may be affected by those alternative sites are not here to speak whether they support or oppose those alternative sites. And the commission's general feeling is if we could hear from that population to help to reach a more informed decision, that that would help us make that decision, I suspect. So I will defer to some of my commissioners here who have spoken before. Start with Commissioner Pletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just say, my concern, I understand your point with regard to if we go out to the neighborhood with five different sites, we're going to get five different sets of people here opposing that same project. I certainly understand. My point is more, if we go down this road, if this commission decides to go down this road, I just would like to see some photo simulations to get a better sense of, I mean, we've heard these projects before. I feel like I've seen some of this equipment. I've seen the equipment certainly around town. But my largest concern is more the aesthetic nature of it, because that just seems to really set what we can and cannot do as far as this body goes. We can't really operate much more beyond kind of aesthetics, at least at this point in time. I know FCC, I'm sure, is working to change that. But in the meantime, so if you were to come back, my only point would be the, just the photo simulations, just to get a better sense of when we say the antennas above the lights, what does that mean? Where's the equipment go? Is certain equipment buried or not buried? That'd be my point. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mine would be the public comment part. We learned tonight from a lot of you, and I thank you all for being here, information that we didn't know in terms of some of the information, photographs, which we don't know when they were taken, by the way. But we learned, public comment wise, in terms of potential vandalism, in terms of site issues and other things that actually go into the process, which we don't know, because we don't live there. You guys live there. So it's really not a question of adding up the oppositions back and forth. It's actually going through the specific public comment information for facts as to exactly what is the least intrusive from an overall standpoint, which again, there's only half the argument here. That's, that would be my position.
Thank you. Mr. Schubin, does that help in any regard?
Yes, and I have two answers, really. If photo sims, I think we'd be looking at 30 days for a tolling agreement. Basically, if we could find time on the agenda, the last meeting in the month of May, the commission would entertain that. We could agree to that. And public comment could be addressed within that time. The only thing that could not be addressed within that time is any public input, which would take a little longer. And I put this to the commission. I know that Mr. Kramer, Dr. Kramer, excuse me, is familiar with the concept of a hello neighbor letter. And these are our letters that some jurisdictions send out at the receipt of a filing of an application. I know that Thousand Oaks has their version, which has generated a lot of comments from the public in the past for wireless facilities. But other jurisdictions use them in more ways to kind of gauge aspects of a project that would need to be included. And they would say, you know, we have a proposal here, it could be either this or this, you know, please provide your input. And those items, when mailed out, and they're quite easy to do to figure out within mailing radius from those locations and from this, you're soliciting those comments from the public to find out if it really is opposition to this site, or is it, would their position change if they knew the facility was going, or a facility was going next to their site? And that could be, that language could be agreed upon. That letter could be sent. Something is, the way we've done it before is it has a map, you know, a site here or sites over at these locations. If you want to look at exhibits, please go down to City Hall. And the city could collect that information. And that becomes very valuable for a commission to assess, you know, what the information that is out there and the truth, the reliability of it. So if that is the request, I would say we're looking at needing, oh, say, 60 to 90 days, depending on how fast we could work with staff to get the letter sent out. Because we request that the city actually send the letter. And that way, there's no questions back to us as if, well, the applicant didn't send it to these people, or they sent it to those. It would be certified by the city of who it went to. And of course, it would be at Verizon's cost with the way the city has a deposit-based system. So if the commission wanted that, I think a 90-day tolling agreement versus a 30 would be required. And either option would be acceptable to Verizon Wireless.
Thank you for that input. Commissioners, response or questions to Mr. Schubin before I let him have a seat? Commissioner Pletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for clarification, you ideally, as the applicant, would request a 90-day? We would, if it was just, if it was just photo sim and giving the opportunity to staff to address public comments, I think 30 days on a tolling agreement is sufficient if there is a late May date available on the commission's calendar, which I don't know if there is or not. If that is insufficient, you wanted the letter the mailer sent, I would ask for a 90-day tolling agreement. Because that would allow the time for Verizon Wireless and staff to agree on the language of that letter, map exhibit that would need to go into it. Because we would not produce that ourselves and say, here, we would want a partnership in that discussion. And that it would be sent out, and you want to give people a reasonable time to respond, which is, I'm thinking, a month to come up with the language and make sure the mailing goes out, a couple of weeks for a response, and then staff time to allow for the reports to be prepared for the commission. And you're fine with either way, depending on how this body goes? Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was 100% clear. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Parker, do you have a comment?
Yes, if I may, Commissioner, excuse me, Chair. 30 days would definitely be insufficient for the amount of work that needs to go into this to allow staff appropriate time to come back with a recommendation for this body. 90 days would put us into the commission's break. So we will be looking at coming back at some time in the fall if that were the case. I just wanted to make that clear. There's not another meeting that's available late in May that would satisfy this. And additionally, as I just wanted to reiterate, that wouldn't be enough time for staff to prepare a report and come back.
When is, sir, when does staff's, excuse me, the commission's break? When are they back in session? Is that August or September?
Excuse me, it'll be September.
If we could say to continue to the first meeting in September and allow a tolling agreement to encompass that time, we would be agreeable to that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any further questions? Commissioner McMahon.
I appreciate your flexibility very much. And I do like the idea of sending out that joint letter. That, to me, would really give us an idea of what the public would like.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, on our, I apologize for interrupting. On our tentative meeting schedule, we do have an August 27th meeting on our lease calendar on the website. So I don't think we'd be pushed totally into September. I just wanted to throw that out there.
I'm sure the staff will figure that out for us.
I'm sure staff appreciates me bringing up this point.
No, no, I do appreciate it. And we would like the opportunity, in case there was a delay for some reason, the flexibility to have September as an option.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schubin, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Just to clarify, we would re-notice before we came back to a hearing.
Yes, sir, I understand that. We were just talking about nailing down an available date, so we don't have a discussion of scheduling, again, say, in July or August, and that we know when we're coming back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schubin. Anything else? Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and allow the commission to discuss what your preference would be in this situation. Who wants to go first? I'm going to start on this side, because it seems like the two of you have been helping with this. Okay, Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I again want to thank Mr. Schubin for being very accommodating and listening to the issues. And again, I know a lot of you are very concerned about this process. But again, he's been extremely accommodating, trying to understand, and will be receptive to your comments. And again, we want to listen to everybody. We want to make sure, you know, we live with you, we live in the community. We want to make sure we're listening to everybody. So we want to give everybody opportunity to be heard. So I would definitely go for the tolling agreement, based on what we've been discussing, and have the meeting in August or September.
Would you like to make that a motion, sir?
I will make a motion to actually approve a tolling agreement, to extend the hearing date to the August or September date.
Thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Mr. Parker?
In consultation with the city attorney's office, we do need to agree to a date certain for the tolling agreement. So I just need one moment as we go through calendar dates.
Thank you very much. We'll give you that moment. I'm going to reopen the public hearing and ask Mr. Schubin if you would step forward so we can make sure we concur and agree to a date. If you'll just entertain us for just a moment. While we're at this break, I just want to take, again, the opportunity to thank everybody for being here and thank you for cases B and C, for learning all about cell sites more than you probably ever wanted to know. Uh, but appreciate the neighbors and your, your spending the time with us. I always appreciate that. I will say that cell sites are one of our most popular cases, although I wouldn't say it's one of our most favorable cases. But nonetheless, we appreciate your coming down and spending the time. So, Mr. Parker, do you have a date for us?
Uh, September 10th.
Mr. Schubin, would you agree to that September 10th as a closed date?
I will check and let you know, sir, as fast as my technology lets me.
And Mr. Chair, for clarity, you're asking Mr. Schubin, on behalf of Verizon, to toll this case until that date certain? Um, so that, that's really the question you're asking him to confirm.
So be it. Do you agree to toll till that date certain?
Yes, we would agree to toll to a date certain in September that includes a hearing on September 10th and all appeals, which I believe would put the date at the 24th.
Mr. Chair, the problem that we have here is that we don't control the appeals calendar for the city council. So I, I think you need to check with the assistant city attorney on this second portion.
This body doesn't control the appeals for the city council as a whole. So we would, i-if perhaps the, the project on September 10th were to deny for, be denied for a variety of reasons, Verizon obviously would have their 10-day appeal rights. Am I correct? And we would follow it in due course. Is that acceptable to Verizon?
I would be, we would be acceptable to the 10-day appeal period, uh, if we ran the tolling agreement to the 24th. And that would allow for that time. And, uh, if, I may, what would happen is if there was an appeal after that hearing, that would be a discussion between the city or Verizon if, whether to toll or not. Uh, I've never known of a, a tolling agreement in such a situation to not be agreed upon, but that is traditionally the way that Verizon's council and the city's council has, um, agreed to tolling agreements, that they encompass the appeal period from the approving body, in this case, uh, the planning commission, not any appeals for a city council. And the reason that is done is, is we all know, if there is an appeal to the council, uh, we are subject to their calendar, and that tolling agreement, uh, becomes a tool at that time to express the need to get it on the city council's agenda expediently and, and soon. So I would agree to September 24th.
Mr. Chair, for clarity, the, the FCC shot clock requires a decision yes or no, and then the appeals are generally outside the shot clocks. I think, if I'm hearing Mr. Schubin, I, I think all of that's fine. He's simply trying to get the extra days to make sure that his appeal was, would be under the shot clock?
Yes, sir.
And, and I would think that that's fine in terms of the shot clock itself, though. It's satisfied with a decision, a yes or no decision, and then there are appeals, uh, that would have to follow, uh, remembering that the appeal could come from, from any party.
Thank you, Dr. Kramer. I'll talk to our attorney for any further information.
Um, just checking the city council's schedule, they have a meeting scheduled for the 25th of September as opposed to the 24th.
We would agree to the 26th.
Thank you.
Well, the issue would also be noticing, noticing on the appeal, when the appeal's filed. So there are a number of moving parts that would actually control the first council date that they could take up and appeal. I'm, I'm just saying they're moving parts here.
Mr. Parker?
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna make a point similar to Mr. Kramer in terms of the city council date. I just wanted to reiterate that this body doesn't control their calendar, and there is noticing that would have to take place with any city council meeting. So the 26 wouldn't be sufficient in order to include any particular city council date. If we're looking to include a toll date that is inclusive of that, I would suggest at least a date into December to allow flexibility for their calendar, as they have to work with the city clerk and others to set that date.
What, what we're talking about is any appeal of this body's decision to be included in the tolling timeframe, not the city councils, just as a tolling, uh, period that we're dealing with right, excuse me, a shot clock that we're dealing with right now that is in early May, that this body's decision is included, the appeal period following the planning commission is including, included in that shot clock.
September 26th would suffice for the appeal period for this body.
Yes, that is, that's why I, we would agree to that.
Thank you.
As long as we've made that clarification, that would be acceptable.
So we do have a date of September 26th. Dr. Kramer, Ms. Lieberman, Mr. Schubin, are we all in agreement here? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Schubin, Schubin. So, uh, Commissioner Newman, do you have a question or comment?
Yes, two things. Um, I want to support the motion.
Excuse me just a minute. I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Okay.
And now we'll continue on with our discussion. Thank you.
Commissioner Lanson previously made a motion, so a question about, uh, order or rules of order here. Um, if, if there's a previous motion and then we reopen the hearing, do we need to remake the motion, or is the motion still before us?
That motion is still alive until action is taken on it?
Okay. And, and the, the discussion that ensued in the public hearing portion, which changed the date of the motion, does that, does that attach to the previous motion?
Let me just check with the maker of the motion. Commissioner Lanson, did any of this past discussion influence your decision, or would you like to retain the motion as stated?
I would like to retain the motion. The only thing we didn't incorporate was the dates that we discussed. So I would say the motion is still, uh, on the table, as I initially indicated, subject to the modifications we've been discussing.
To the date certain of September 26th?
Correct. Subject to the date certain of September 26th.
For the, for the tolling date?
For the tolling date.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Commissioner Pletcher?
Wow, it's like law school all over again. Um, no, I'm, I'm certainly going to, uh, support the motion, and I, I, you know, want to thank the neighborhood for coming out. I, I don't remember who made the comment that you don't have a, a neighborhood association, but you certainly have, uh, gathered together, yes, thank you, sir. Uh, you certainly have gathered together and banded together quite well. Uh, this is, in my short time on the commission, I have to say this is something I have never seen before on a cellphone, or a cell tower site. And each one of you with your very thought, well-thought-out comments and, and photos, uh, I applaud you, and I want to thank you for coming out, because it, it shows us time and time again that your voice and your input matters, not only to this body, but the way that we as a collective government run and work with applicants to hopefully meet a, get a fair median and make everybody happy to the extent that we can. Um, so I'm certainly in favor of this motion, and will be supporting the motion. I, my questions, as I mentioned before, lie a lot with what do, do these alternative sites look like, and photo simulations, I think, would help me personally make up my mind there. Um, I know that going to these alternative sites, we're certainly going to have, uh, a lot of input from, uh, the locals, so I certainly expect, uh, local neighbors in those areas to be just as informed and give just as much input as you have tonight. So thank you again, and, uh, I'll pass it back to the chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further comments or questions? Okay, with that, I'm going to ask the recording secretary to prepare us for a vote.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you all for attending, and thank you for the rest of you for your patience. I'm going to ask that you indulge us for an additional 10 minutes while we take a short break, and we'll come back for the second half. Thank you very much. Thank you. Welcome back to the Thousand Oaks Planning Commission meeting of April 23rd. We're going to pick up at case 7B. If the recording secretary would please call that case into the record, please.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item number 7B regarding subject Silverado Memory Care Facility for case numbers LU 2017-70280, Z 2017-70523, SUP 2017-70522, and ND 2017-70524. The applicant is Silverado Senior Living, and the location is 980 Warwick Avenue.
Thank you. And we're going to ask Carrie Finley, our senior planner, for the presentation this evening. Ms. Finley, good to see you again. Please give us what you got.
Thank you, Chair Nichols. Um, members of the commission and the public, I'm Carrie Finley, the project planner for this item. Um, this item involves requests for approval and construction of an 82-bed assist, uh, living facility, which is 100% memory care. It also includes a general plan amendment, a zone change, and the special use permit, and in addition, the, um, adoption of a negative declaration. I'll address each of these components in my presentation. And this evening, the planning commission's role is to make a recommendation to the city council. So this slide shows an aerial view of the project site that is outlined in red. Um, the site is surrounded on three sides by public roads, including Warwick Avenue on the west, Mayflower Street on the north, and Moore Park Road to the east. There's a church, an existing church to the south, who the, um, owners of the church are also the owners of this property. Um, this church property, just for context, has entitlements for the construction of 23 townhouses. It's not a part of this project, but this, there has been some questioning about that facility, so I'm just gonna touch on it real quickly, that the 23 townhomes were originally approved in 2004, and updated plans were approved in 2015 for modifications to the grading plans and oak tree permit. The project site is also surrounded by various, um, types of residential development, including apartments, townhomes, and single-family residential to the north and to the, um, east. The, um, greater parts you see here to the left of the project site are the 20 Oaks, um, residential subdivision that has now been fully constructed and is occupied. Um, and just to provide context, um, I have a couple of photos on and around the project site. This is a view of the existing parking area landscaping, um, across the site facing to the northeast, um, towards Moore Park Road. And this photo shows a view across the project site facing northwest, towards the 28, 20 Oaks subdivision, um, across Warwick. This photo is, uh, facing south on Warwick, towards, um, towards the, where the entrance will be, um, along the sidewalk. The project site is here to the left, and you can see how it slopes up on the left side. Um, this photo is a view along Moore Park Road facing south, and the project site's on the right, and this is existing wall that is, um, slated to be removed. So for the first, um, component of the request, I want to talk a little bit about the general plan amendment. Um, the current general plan is medium-density residential, and the proposed or requested is institutional. The institutional designation is consistent with the, with the proposed zoning, which is PL or the public, quasi-public, and institutional lands and facilities. Um, the general planments, amendments, excuse me, require initiation by the city council, and in August of 2017, the city council reviewed the proposed general plan amendment and initiated the amendment and the concurrent processing of the, of the related entitlements that are before you this evening. And this is the land use map that represents the, um, change in the general plan designation from medium-density residential to institutional. You can see that the light green is medium-density for, you know, general plan context. This yellow-orange is low-density, and then we have some high-density, and hence the, the variety of the different types of residential units in the area, in the community. The second component I'm gonna talk about is the zone change. It's currently zoned RPD or residential plan development. The proposed zoning is, again, PL or public, quasi-public, and institutional lands and facilities. Um, the assisted living facility that is being requested, it's, it's, um, the memory care facility is, is considered a type of assisted living facility for purposes of, of imposing our zoning standards. Um, so the assisted living facilities are allowed in the PL zone, but not in the RPD zone, and that, that necessitates the zone change. Also, because assisted living facility is similar to a multifamily-type residential use, and I use that word loosely, um, the uses will be compatible with the existing residential in the neighborhood. And then again, here's the map that represents the zone change, which becomes part of your, your resolution recommending approval if, if you so choose to do so. Um, you can see here that the RPD will become PL, would become PL. This R1 is all around to the north and east. There is some additional PL. This is a Keneho Community Park owned by CRPD, and then these other PL and open space protected areas are down here with the adjacent residential. So now moving on to the specific project site plan. This slide shows a proposed site plan. It's just over two acres in size. They're proposing one entrance from the west on Warwick Avenue. Um, it's a two-story building, building located in the center of the site, consisting of 35,000 and over, and 500-plus square feet with 18,700-plus square foot footprint. Um, it includes 46 rooms and a memory garden in the center, dining rooms, a community kitchen, or a commercial kitchen, laundry, library, therapy rooms, a view patio, a bistro, um, country kitchens, and, uh, activity rooms. The parking area, you can see wraps around the building from the west side down across the south and to the east side, and, um, it contains 49 spaces, parking spaces, which is what is required by the code. Um, in addition, you can see that all sides of the, of the property and the building and parking will be surrounded by landscaping. So the, the proposed project meets most all of the municipal code zoning standards, with the exception of three minor waivers of standards. They're allowed, um, to be waived if they're approved by the planning commission. So these include an increase in building lot coverage, approval of two versus one monument sign, and a reduction in the parking lot landscaping. And I'll review these briefs next. So, um, in order to analyze this waiver, staff looked at some of the other design features. Um, you can see the request here. You can see the request here. The lot coverage, what's allowed in the PL zone is 25%, and what they're requesting is 39%. And so we analyzed and looked at some of the other design features and the code requirements, which include the setbacks. And in the PL zone, there's 20-foot required setback. And this product, this building is set back 50 to 83, 83 feet. 50 is the shortest setback on Mayflower Street on the north side. So it provides generous setbacks. The building height, what's allowed is 35 feet, what's proposed is 27 feet. Again, it's, it's below the, the maximum height requirement or allowance. And then in addition, there's also a large amount, 45% of total landscaping on the site. And given the site design, staff recommends approval of this waiver. The second waiver I'm going to talk about briefly is the monument sign, proposed monument signs. And as I stated, the municipal code allows approval of one in the PL zone. But you can, the planning commission has authority to approve more than one. The large sign is 43 feet from end to end, 33 feet in the middle, and about eight feet high. And it's supposed to be located over here on the corner of, of Moore Park and Mayflower Streets. The smaller sign is seven feet, six, seven and a half feet across and five feet tall. And it's proposed to be located near the entrance here. I've added these additional perspective views so you can see where the signs would be located. This top photo shows where the large sign would be located. And then this entrance sign would be here on Warwick Avenue. So given the fact that this site is surrounded on three sides by streets, the design of the sign is, is proposed to be the stone veneer and matching colors and materials to the building, staff feels that, would recommend approval of the two monument signs. The third and last waiver I'm going to talk about real quickly here is the, there's a reduction in parking lot landscaping. What is required is 10% landscaping in parking areas. And they're providing 3.5% in the immediate parking area. The 10% landscaping is intended typically to break up large seas of parking and provide some shading and, and enhance the design of the parking area. But in this case, you can see that this is a relatively small parking area. And due to this wraparound design and the large amount of perimeter landscaping, that the parking area will be screened from public views for the most part. So again, staff supports approval of all three of these waivers. And this one, also the reduction in required parking lot landscaping. So this slide shows the building elevations. The drawings show a contemporary Mediterranean style with well-articulated facade, varied colored roof tiles, stucco walls painted with muted colors, and stone veneer features. There are a combination of arched and square windows. And the trim for the cornice, trellis, rails, and door frames will be painted with an accent brown color. In addition, the roof equipment is proposed to be concealed. Overall, the proposed building is of a high-quality design and architecture and meets the city's architectural design guidelines for institutional projects. So this slide provides perspective image showing the proposed building with the landscaping. The top view is from Mayflower Street looking towards the south. And you can see there's some shadowed-in tree trunks here that have, they've all been just shadowed in so that you can see the, the amassing in the architecture of the building. But in reality, there is a lot of landscaping proposed here as well that will soften the views and, and it will blend in nicely with the landscaping and the building. This second one is, of course, the entrance from Warwick where the driveway is. This top one is from the northwest, so this is the corner of Mayflower and Warwick, looking towards the building. And then this last one again is from Moore Park, the corner of Moore Park Road, going on the left side and Mayflower Street on the right. And this is, image reflects the preliminary landscape plan. It's a robust plan with, with ample landscaping. It, it, I was given numbers on this. And there are over 6,000 ground cover and shrub plants included in this plan and a whopping 103 trees. So it's, it's very robust and showing a good design. The final plan, this is a conceptual landscape plan. And the final plan would come through for approval by the city staff and the city's landscape architect and after project approvals. So although there are no protected trees on the site, the applicant has voluntarily proposed to incorporate, incorporate at least three oak trees within the landscape plan to replace the three small unprotected trees that are found on the site. So there was no tree report, but they volunteered to replace them anyway. So finally, a negative declaration was prepared for the project in accordance with CEQA. No potential to cause significant effects on the environment were identified. No comments have been received on the negative declaration for this project from other agencies or the public. And in summary, due to the high-quality design and architecture, the low-impact nature of the proposed development, and the abundant conceptual landscaping plan, staff reports, supports the proposed project and recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution recommending the city council approve the request based on the findings and conditions described in the model resolution. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Finley. Appreciate the information. Any information from Mr. Shepherd or Taylor at this point? Are you just available for questions? Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions of Ms. Finley or anything else for the public works or planning team up there, representatives? If not, we can move forward. Oh, yes, Mr. Newman. Commissioner Newman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Finley, for your presentation. Just a couple of quick questions regarding the grading activity. There's almost 6,600 cubic yards of export. Does that represent, how many truck trips does that represent? By my math, I think it's like 470, 500, somewhere in there. Am I in the right ballpark?
Yes, you are. That's exactly where it would be.
All right, thank you. And where, what is, what haul route or routes are you, are you planning?
Well, there are two alternatives being considered. One is southerly on Warwick, down through Wilbur and down across Hillcrest over to the interchange of Lynn and, and the 101. The second one would be up northerly toward Gainesboro and out Jants and out the 23 to the north, depending on where the soil is needed or where it's to be disposed.
Okay, thank you. Also, in the architectural projections, these are in pages 54, 55 in our packet. It appears, I, I hope this is just a drawing detail. It appears the project is surrounded on at least two sides by lawn, by grass. Is that, is that just an artist's rendition? Or is there actually going to be something more drought tolerant in place?
What's indicated is ground cover and not, not grass.
Okay, so it isn't, I mean, it looks like a lawn in the drawing, but it's not, in reality, it wouldn't be.
And I'll let the applicant respond to that, but that's my understanding. And also, it would be subject to review with, compliance with our landscape guidelines. And the lawn would be discouraged.
Okay. And finally, in the perspective drawings you provided in your presentation, they're in our packet as well on pages 54 and 55. There's some ghosting of trees. Are those, is that again, as you mentioned in your presentation, for other drawings, you said they're just there to show where they'd be in front of the, they, they would block the thing we're trying to show. Is that the case with these, these perspective drawings as well? Or is the city installing holographic machines that project pictures of trees in the background? Or what's that about?
I'm going to catch up here and see if I can get the same page as you.
I'm on pages 54 and 55 of our packet.
Yeah, those are intended to allow you to see the, the building itself. But there, there are street trees here, and there will be additional trees on the site.
Okay, on the, the one on page 55, the view from the northeast, I've never seen trees that tall behind this site. So are, are the trees going to be planted in front of the structure then? Is that, is that the intent?
I believe these, these are intended to be in front because I know that there are some sycamores and they're, they're to be planted on this, this edge of the site. And there, there are also some, well, the, the street trees are shown on that particular one. But I think those are all the, in front of it.
Okay, thanks. And then, I'm sorry, I did have one more question. If you could just help me clarify my understanding of the architectural drawing on page 58. Just about the driveway, this, this drawing is riddled with percentage grades, which are different at different parts of the site. And the driveway looks like it's 3.5% on one side and 9.3% on the other side of the entryway to the, to the site. And I hope I'm misreading that and not understanding in, in that it's not really as tilted as that.
So can you tell me what the sheet number is on it? Because I don't have
Sure.
the same pagination, sorry. Is it the grading plan?
This is sheet one of five.
Yes.
Yes, preliminary grading plan. And I'm only looking at the driveway here. And it's marked as being 3.5% on one side and 9.3. Is that before grading occurs, or is that the final grade?
If I, if I may interject here at this point, this plan is not intended to be a technical drawing. It's just a rendering of what the site plan would look like. Before grades would be approved on-site, they would have to go through a plan check process to comply with all city codes and requirements in that regard. So what's depicted here from a technical standpoint may not be exactly accurate in terms of grades. But the applicant is more than welcome to answer that question when they have opportunities.
Okay, I'll, I'll bring it up with the applicant. I mean, it's not currently tilted crazy like that from 3 to 9%. It's, it's pretty flat at the moment. And I don't know if the intent was to have a driveway be that, that off-kilter or more likely that I'm, I'm reading this incorrectly. But, but I'll, I'll follow up with the applicant on that. Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Finley, for the presentation. Just wanted to perhaps back-clean up on a couple of questions regarding the, the negative declaration. Any public comments received just in regard to that?
There were, there were no public comments directed at the negative declaration. We did have some, I had a couple of emails with a couple of community members. And I believe they also spoke with the applicant at their community outreach meeting. And the ultimate result was I, that I heard was that they were satisfied with the, the information that they received.
Okay. Turning to the construction, I mean, we already briefly discussed the haul routes. And so I'll skip over that. But one of the other issues that kind of frequents with this body and, and one of my largest, larger concerns is construction parking, especially because you're abutting, you know, Moore, Moore Park, Warwick Avenue. You have some major thoroughfares. Has the applicant, and I'll just perhaps need to pose it to the applicant, have they submitted any kind of parking plan, or perhaps I missed that in the staff report? Has there been any kind of discussion where the construction vehicles are going to go during construction? Should we approve this?
Yes, Commissioner Pletcher, we included the standard condition that requires them to park on-site. And the applicants reviewed those and agreed to these conditions.
What, what number is that? Because I just happened to miss that. Does anybody pipe in?
Number 51. It says all construction equipment, materials, and related contractor vehicles shall be located on-site.
You covered it. Good. With regard to the parking issue in the landscape, you said they're looking at about a 3.5%. We'd like about a 10%. Just in looking at the overall landscaping plan, I believe it's page, the conceptual landscape plan, it's page 16 in our packets. In calculating the three-point, just so I understand, in calculating the 3.5%, you'd really only be looking at the proposed trees that are actually physically in the parking lot area? Not include, you wouldn't be including all the trees along the outside, is that correct?
Yeah, it's, it's just the little fingers that come out into the parking area that were counted. So it, it's kind of how you, how you count it, I think.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand how staff got to where, where it needed to go on the, on the parking percentage. That's all for now, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon.
Yes, hi. I was looking at the, the map of how you would drive in. And it's, it, the driveway doesn't go all the way around. So I'm looking at, you follow it around and you're looking for a parking place. And according to this, it's 26 feet wide, so you can't really do a three-point turn. So I need some reassurance that there's enough of a site distance that, that we won't have drivers going all the way to the end and then having to back up.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner McMahon. We reviewed that issue. We looked at that, and that's correct. There is just 26 feet behind the parking spaces. The, and the little extension beyond the end of the parking area, especially on, well, I guess it's on both sides, is enough for them to back out and out of the spaces. The thought is that as you come around the south end of the property, near the trash enclosure, as you peek around there, you can see that, you can see all those parking spaces. And if you see that they're full, you can back up right there and turn around. So we, the staff feels that there's, there's enough space to, to maneuver around on the site.
Okay, and that's including if there was an exceptionally large car in one of the spaces, like a SUV or something, that would be okay. So.
Yeah, they're all full-size spaces actually along that section there. So a, a large vehicle would park within that area. You could see around them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? I have a few here myself. When I was out looking at the site on Saturday, there was a row of cars parked along Warwick. And you couldn't find another spot to park. I was wondering, is, is parking a challenge in that neighborhood where this is going to contribute to that? Or is this not an issue? And everything has been addressed? Because I presume these are all from the apartments across the street. Is there was nothing else, there was no activities at the church or anything else? I just was curious what the, what the current parking scenario is on Warwick Avenue.
Good evening. Kathy Lowry, Traffic, Public Works. You're correct, there's, there's a great You're correct, there's a great hundred percent use of on-street parking in front of this property. And I observed it myself, I saw it on Sunday when the church looked like they might have been having some use at the church. But the church was not using very much of their own parking. So yes, the feeling is without actually knowing for sure that the apartments contribute mostly to the on-street parking. And with this project going in, because of, you have to have the line of sight when you come out the driveways, mostly all the spaces in front of this property will be posted no parking in order there to be site distance. And so those cars will be, they'll park somewhere else. So they'll either go up into the neighborhood or they'll go down the neighborhood.
Have there been any concerns expressed by the Church of people parking in their parking lot? And they didn't want them to do that?
I think you could probably ask, I think representatives from the Church are here. But from the city standpoint, I looked through our files, our concerns for Warwick files, and there's never been an issue of there being too much parking in Warwick that they, people have called the city, there's records and it's been addressed of people that were parking large trucks, they were basically storing trucks. And that was addressed by the Police Department.
Okay, okay. I do have another traffic question, I'm glad you're here tonight, Ms. Lowry. Regarding the traffic impact analysis, the comparison was made for parking, since there was nothing for memory care facility, I presume, to be likened to an assisted living facility. However, the assisted living facility, there is an assumption that some of those residents may actually be driving still. But in a memory care facility, I would presume that none of those residents would be driving. Is there nothing to compare like that? Like I would presume even a skilled nursing facility where there would be no people likely to be driving. Is there no logical comparison? And this was the next best opportunity you had?
The answer shortly is yes, but I'll add some more words. The Institute of Transportation Engineers has trip generation rates and for skilled nursing, memory care, assisted living. But their sample size is very small and it's a national study. So we, as city staff, surveyed memory, assisted living facilities in the city. So we would have a truer rate for what assisted livings, at least in the city of Thousand Oaks, opposed to the seven studies that were done nationally. So we feel very comfortable with the number that we have. Does represent a mix, it's assisted living that may have memory care, like on the third floor of a three-story assisted living, like Sunrise Assisted Living. So to do just the memory care, there aren't enough samples that we could get an accurate one. But what we feel that this is very conservative, if anything, the numbers would be much less for a trip generation rate. So this is conservative.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let me rifle through my papers here. Maybe this is a question for the applicant, but I had a question regarding the numbers of staff that would be on site. So I'll preserve that for them, they can be prepared to answer that question. Then also, no, actually, I'm gonna hold off on that one. Oh, yes, I noticed in community outreach, it indicates that there were two meetings, and maybe this is again for the applicant, but you can be prepared. One at Cal Lutheran and one at the Thousand Oaks Community Center. But there's no indication of the number of people that actually were there. So maybe you could help provide that information when it's your turn here. And I think that will conclude my questions. Did anyone else I see? Commissioner Pletcher, please go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I missed one on my list. Just very quickly, on page five of the staff report, in discussing lot coverage, you write that the applicant could propose to add a third floor, which would increase the height, be consistent with maximum building height, essentially would reduce lot coverage. Is this just, did you have discussions with the, and I'll end up probably asking the applicant the same question. Did you have discussions regarding this and this just wasn't considered? This was the best viable option? Or, you know, what went into writing these few sentences?
Well, the short answer is no, we did not have that discussion. But the reason is, we felt that this design would be better for this neighborhood and more compatible because it's two stories. And the majority of the buildings are two stories in that neighborhood. We felt that a three-story building, staff felt that the three-story building would be more imposing and have a greater impact.
Okay, perfect.
And this design is desirable, in our opinion.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood what went into that. So really best viable option from staff's standpoint. Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anything else from the Commission? Okay, with that, I'm going to ask our applicant to step forward. And I have several cards from the team. Let's see, we have Paul Mullen, who's a Senior Vice President of Development from Silverado. If you could please give your name and city residence for the record. And I do have cards from several of your staff members, who I presume, or team members, I should say. And appears that Mr. Pancake is going to be giving some presentations, rest for questions. Feel free to introduce them. And collectively, you have fifteen minutes, however you want to divide that.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the Planning Commission's time this evening. My name is Paul Mullen from Irvine, California with Silverado, Senior Living. Tonight, Doug Pancake, our architect, will also be addressing you. And if it's okay, Mike Savage, our landscape architect, will fit into the fifteen minutes to address the landscape questions, which were all really good ones. Just wanted to show our gratefulness for allowing Silverado to even be here. We had an incredibly warm reception back in September of 2017 from the City Council, asking us to quickly get through the process and get back to them based on the need here in the community for memory care services. So we really felt the love, I guess you could say, of the Commission and the Council at that time. And it's been incredibly nice to work with Kari in particular. Really great planning staff and associates that you have here that have been incredibly supportive. So thank you for that. You know, we did have several community meetings. There were about ten to fifteen people in our first meeting, and I want to say about the same number in our second meeting. We also went door-to-door around our neighborhood. Silverado generally as a developer and operator of senior living first stops with the city to find out kind of what their interest is in having memory care there. And then very immediately afterwards, once we feel there's a warm kind of feeling of love that we need to be there, we'll go out to the community and go door-to-door, particularly within the area. We talked to a lot of different residents. I was just talking actually with Eileen Smith, who left a nice supportive note card outside. It's one of the neighbors who came out tonight. She couldn't quite make it this far in the meeting, but she did leave a comment card. So we did listen to them. What we heard in those community meetings really shaped the development that we're presenting tonight. One of which was certainly the concern around parking and traffic throughout the neighborhood that they've seen from the apartment complex. Forty-nine parking spaces on this particular community and site is actually more than we would typically build. I think it's the requirement, but also suits us just fine as kind of a maximum amount of parking for these amount of residents. To the question around the number of associates, we have a one-to-one, full-time equivalent ratio of associates to our residents over a seven-week period. Our max shift, or the maximum number of associates that would be showing up at six AM on a non-peak hour, we have three shifts, we try and keep them out of the peak driving time in consideration of our neighborhood and our surroundings, is thirty-six associates. And these numbers are on page six of the planning report that was submitted. The next shift, we would have twenty-seven staff members coming in from two PM to ten PM. And then the knock shift or late-night shift, really a maximum of seventeen associates, probably even fewer than that because it's the knock shift. But that's kind of the max capacity. So the highest number of associates showing up to park would be thirty-six in those forty-nine stalls. So I feel like we're adequately parked. Unfortunately, for assisted living in general and memory care, we don't see enough residents' families coming to visit. We wish there were more. We welcome the Boy Scouts and the local elementary schools. And we really want to have multi-generational and, you know, programming where people are coming out. We really just don't see enough visitors. Typically, they're coming on the weekends or late at night. So I don't think we're going to be incredibly impacted by visitor traffic or parking. So I think we got pretty positive response from the neighbors we spoke to about that. Their real concern seemed to be the apartments and parking on the street there, which we don't intend to do with this large parking lot. Couple other things we heard from the community around us was, hey, please, you know, this sounds great. How intense of a development will this be? As you noted, memory care, these folks are not driving. We do not have anybody driving other than our associates. You know, so there's not a huge amount of traffic coming and going as there might be if it was a, I think noted in this report, a thirty-one-unit condominium or a forty-two-unit affordable project. That'd be a massive amount of elevation and density compared to what we're really proposing. And a massive amount of traffic, I think, in comparison. So I think we really helped address that in talking through the options with our neighbors. They seem pretty happy with it. We haven't seen any real contentious questions coming from the community. Several neighbors asked us to buy the other parcel. I guess it's been up for sale as twenty-three condominiums and has changed hands a few times. And we would actually, during staging and construction, rent that space as long as we could for parking onsite for construction. The Church is willing to do that on a month-to-month basis. So we hope to do that and certainly don't want to cause a big commotion around parking while we're under construction. You know, so those were really kind of the things we've heard. I'll let Doug come up and speak to kind of the architecture and the design of what we're doing. But I also just want to mention, we're always affiliating with the best hospitals, the best teaching and research affiliations. We recently opened up in Alexandria, Virginia. John Hopkins is one of the universities we immediately went to because they're neuro program and are affiliating with them. Here locally, Los Robles has always been a partner of ours in our sister Calabasas community, and we're going to continue that affiliation. Amy from their PR department spoke on our behalf during the City Council meeting. So that's certainly something we're bringing, I think, is the best and breed of memory care and services for people with dementia. And we're constantly pushing the envelope on how to better care for people and really change the world for the way people are cared for with dementia. That's really our goal, and we hope to bring that here to Thousand Oaks. I'll let Doug take over from here and talk a little bit more about some of the questions architecturally.
Good evening, Commissioners. Again, thank you for hearing our project, considering our project. I'm honored to be a part of the Silverado team. I've been working for this company for over twenty years. My name is Doug Pancake, I live in Irvine, California. My offices are in Irvine. Licensed in fifteen states though, and I have a very strange firm and all I do is senior housing and healthcare. It's my life's passion. My master's degree, which was a research-based degree program, was called Innovative Environments for Individuals with Alzheimer's Disease. I finished it in the early nineties when there was no such thing. And I became enamored with the fact, first of all, that architecture could help people live better lives. And nowhere that I can find is this more true than dementia care. I do lots of senior living, skilled nursing. I sit on the State Fire Marshal's Code Advisory Committee for Residential Care Facilities and actually got to help change the skilled nursing model. We now have household skilled nursing buildings in the state. I'm very proud that I did the first and second of those buildings. All based on a residential scale, very human scale. The great news is that our assumptions work and folks with dementia live better lives. They're more oriented to their environment. We concentrate on perception, wayfinding. How do you create wayfinding for a person who can't form a cognitive map? Well, you provide all of the spaces that are accessible to our residents where we want to encourage them to go immediately in the realm of their perception. Think of the round room. I may want to go to the kitchen, I may want to go to the courtyard, I may want to go over here. If I can see it, that functions as a memory cue and I can be self-determined. That leads to increased autonomy. We watch that all the time. The home-like vocabulary in these buildings is wonderful. So you walk into a living room, it looks like a residential living room. That's an overlearned behavior, so the folks will actually adapt that behavior as opposed to walking in, you can imagine, a multipurpose room where you don't know if it's dinnertime or what activity is going on. So we use the vocabulary of the environment to actually help folks get along better. I've gone back and looked at post-occupancy evaluations of my project and learned very early in my career that we were on to something, and it really works. We're honored to bring this program into your city. I know from twenty years of experience, twenty-four years of experience, that your residents will benefit and this will actually add to the supply of a high-quality assisted living and memory care in your community. I wanted to talk about two things. I've got five minutes before I use all the time. Our landscape architect can address questions. You had asked about drought tolerant. Our plans do meet all of the city requirements, but I'm not going to pretend to be the expert when the expert's here. And our civil engineer is here as well. David Terry can talk about the grading as well. Two things I wanted to talk about, I already came out of the chute with our environmental design. You do need to think about it in terms of a prosthetic design and a therapeutic design. Our environment, from the space planning to the details in the building, help people navigate, help people, the environment compensates for missing skills. It is also designed both for physical, intellectual, and social skills. It serves as a therapeutic program. The environment can actually pull people out of their rooms and get them to engage. We create lots of wonderful amenities to create wonderful spontaneous activities. We don't want this to feel like a facility. I've had clients who've called it the F-word. We don't want facilities, we want this to feel like home. So my clients include Silverado, of course, Brookdale, Atria, lots of not-for-profits. Silverado is an amazing client, my best client, don't tell Atria that. But my mom is a Silverado client, that's how much I believe in the program. Can you go to the elevations really quickly? Kari, thank you. So we took our design cues, let me talk a little bit about the elevations in my, maybe take one more minute. We did scout the neighborhood. We looked at this, you know, beautiful new development adjacent to us and took some of our design cues there. If I had to describe this in terms of architectural style, we took our design cues first from Spanish Colonial Revival Architecture. It's a contemporary application of that. We've upgraded some of the materials with what we think are very elegant materials. And I can get into a long description of that, but we're using eagle roofing, variegated concrete tiles, higher-quality architectural roof tile. We've got wrought iron on the building. We have El Dorado lead stone on the building. And I can point all of these out if you like. It's kind of hard to see, I hope you have good monitors in front of you. But you can zoom in and see the detailing. This is a commercial building, if you think about that in terms of the size of it, but it's very residential in its scale and its appointment and our use of materials. We have three minutes left. I don't want to short-change the landscape. I can talk about my work all night long and it's kind of late, but I can keep going. Mr. Savage, why don't you come and talk about the landscape? And I'll be available for questions, thank you so much.
Landscape plan, oh, great, there it is. Name is Mike Savage, Savage Land Design. I reside in Fullerton, California. Just to quickly go through a couple of the questions, and I'll talk a little bit about the landscape. Actually, Mr. Newman, what you see on there is not grass. There is, the only grass we'd have would be inside the courtyard. We run out of green colors and sometimes one of them looks like grass, but it is all drought tolerant. But with that in mind, the, our landscape design is based on two different, we focus on two different areas. One is view focus, which is why you see so many trees. We consider view-in, view-out screening also. So that'd be more of our drought tolerant areas there, larger trees. On the inside, it's more sensory focused where it's more, you know, visual colors and sense, and olfactory senses. And then I'll go over to Mr. Fletcher's question regarding the three percent makeup. As you can see, the parking lot is parked, most of it's parked on one side only. So we can only, for the sake of the calculation, we can only take the little planting areas on the sides and the fingers and stuff. So if you consider everything at the heads of the parking, as you drive around, it's considerably more than three and a half percent. So I'd be happy to answer more questions, but just to... So I'd be happy to answer more questions, but just to give the last minute here to Mr. Terry. Answering anything regarding the grading?
Hi, good evening, commissioners. My name's David Terry. I'm with CNV Consulting. They're an engineering firm out of Lake Forest, California. And Mr. Newman, I think you had a question about the grades going into the thing. Mr. Parker's right, this is really kind of a very preliminary look at it, but the general answer to your question is Warwick Avenue is pretty steep. And so as we're trying to come into the driveway and flatten it out as we get on top, it's going to be steeper on one side than the other. But the city staff's not going to allow us to do anything that doesn't comply with their regulations, so I'm sure they'll comment on it during the design phase, final design. If you have any other questions, I can certainly answer those for you.
Thank you all very much. We have a list here of all the team members, and I think you've covered them all. So we've got Sammy Hassan, community administrator, Mr. Michael Savage, David Terry, Tim Gallagher, principal of community relations, and Tony Gwynn, senior director of acquisitions. So any questions for any of them, feel free to speak up. If not, we'll continue moving forward. Okay, I do have one additional speaker card that is not part of the team, and that is Karen Gorback. Yes. Thank you for waiting us out. Please make your way up. Give us your name and city residence for the record, please, and you will have five minutes.
I don't need five minutes. I'm so tired. Oh, God, okay. Good evening, Chair Nichols, commissioners, and city staff. My name is Karen Gorback, and I live in the Thousand Oaks neighborhood in which the Silverado project is being proposed, just right down Warwick and on Westbury Street. My comments tonight are my own opinions and not those of any agency with which I'm affiliated. And I support the development of the Silverado project. We know that older adults make significant contributions to the livability and economy of our community through both paid and volunteer work. But according to Dr. Bader Ichbal of Los Robles Hospital, who spoke to the Council on Aging in January, far too many older adults in this community will develop the disease of dementia. With Alzheimer's being the most common form, there is no cure. The Ventura County Public Health Department recently released health indicator data for Ventura County for the 65-plus population, indicating that in 2015, I'm losing my voice, 10.2% of individuals 65 and older had developed Alzheimer's disease or another form of dementia. And that compares to cancer during the same year at 8.7%. And they're both terrible. They're both terrible. Regarding the Silverado project, there is no question that the need is great. I attended their community meeting, and they seem like good, compassionate, creative people with well-developed business model that has been successful in other areas. Now, I don't know anyone right now, right at this moment, who requires memory care, but given the data and given the odds, that will probably change. And I know I would want my friend, or relative, or you, or me, if the need comes, to live in a nice environment and a lovely neighborhood with tree-lined streets like Shadow Oaks. I have lived there for 31 years. And so I would urge the commission to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments, and thank you for waiting us out. I know you've listened to more than you cared for, but thank you so much. That was the only additional speaker card I had. There was one additional, Robert Fritz, but had to leave early, and he is actually opposed to the project. But he left his card as a statement card, but there's no actual additional statement on it. So that was all the cards I had. Was there anyone else that meant to speak and did not get an opportunity to hand in a card? Okay, if not, I will go back to staff and offer you the opportunity to speak to any issues that came up during these comments.
I don't have anything else to add, except that the project team's been great to work with and very amenable and accommodating. Whenever we asked for anything, they provided it immediately, unless you have additional questions for me.
Thank you very much. Any additional questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. We go back to the applicant. You have an additional five minutes to plead your case, rebut any concerns. You're welcome to take advantage of that or move on forward, your choice. All right, I see a taker. If you'll just give us your name and city residence for the record, please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sammy Hassan. I'm the senior administrator at Silverado in Calabasas, and I live in Granada Hills. And thank you again for the time. We have a unique opportunity to take advantage of the area we live in and serve individuals with memory loss. This is a family disease, and we really show the family members, the community, our associates that we're here to change their lives. When someone comes into us, we wrap our arms around them and show love and hold on to them, hold their hand, have a community with music, kids, pets, and we have a program based around wellness so that the residents, their family members, and our associates can do things now to help change their lives for the better. And so we really do mean it when we say we're here to change the world with folks with dementia. So I hope we have this opportunity for the individuals in Thousand Oaks, because in Calabasas, we have about 20 residents who are living from Thousand Oaks who have to move out of their city, and many of their kids have to go and travel to other cities because they don't have the memory care that Silverado provides. So thank you.
Mr. Hassan, before you depart, since you're the last one standing here, a couple of questions. Does that mean that there are currently no memory care facilities available in Thousand Oaks, or they're all occupied? Is that why they're going to Calabasas?
I know there are some memory care, and I don't think they're occupied. I think that Silverado presents a unique model, because it's all we do is memory care. So our training, every one of our associates is dementia care certified, and so there's a need in that sense, where somebody can say they do dementia care, but Silverado is just much different in that respect.
Okay, that was my second question, and you beat me to it, so thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Hassan? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and I have no cards. That's it for our applicant and staff, unless there's any further comments. Hearing ended, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open for comments, questions from the staff, or a motion. I'll go to Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's no question that memory care is an urgent need in our community and many communities, but especially here. And so I will gladly support this application. I think you've done your homework. You clearly have lots of experience in this area, and from what we've heard from staff, have been great to work with. So thank you for choosing Thousand Oaks. Thank you for providing a much-needed service in our area. I do want to make one small correction before I make a motion to the application. The motion itself, on page 16, misspells our chair's name, so with that one correction, this is...
I saw that, too, this time. Thank you.
April 23rd is National Make Sure Doug Nichols Gets Taken Care Of Day. With that one amendment, I propose that we recommend to the city council adoption of LU 2017-70280, from medium-density residential to institutional, that we do a zoning change, Z 2017-70523, from RPD to PL, that we recommend special use permit 2017-70522 to allow construction of an 82-bed memory care facility on Warwick, and that we recommend the negative declaration, ND 2017-70524. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. I think you caught all of that. Commissioner Fletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly support the motion and want to thank not only the applicant for your work with city staff and putting a smile on city staff's face, which, you know, we work hard to try to do each time we have a meeting, but to see it is always a good thing. But in all seriousness, you do great work at your Silverado facilities. I think city council, looking back at their meeting and recommendation many months ago, I think they saw it in the immediate, this is something we need at our city. And I most certainly want to applaud beyond that is your community outreach. It's something that even more and more, as we see these projects come through and we hear applicants, more and more, we stress the community outreach. You heard it certainly tonight for two and a half hours. We are a body that represents and helps facilitate conversation between the public and the applicant, and you have certainly done a wonderful job with that. And just the look, the feel, everything in between, you put together a very solid package, so I'm very happy to support the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Commissioner McMahon.
Yes, I too want to thank you for coming to our city. It looks like a very quality project. It's up to our high standards, and I know there's a need. There's been a lot of talk about that. And so I don't have a lot to say. I just want to say I will support the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since it's late and we have another matter, I'll keep it short as well. I believe we desperately need a memory care facility in our community. We have a nice puzzle of a community, and this is one piece that we need to fill. So thank you for bringing this to us, and I would support the motion.
Thank you. And I'll too keep my comments short. To be honest with you, I was a little bit surprised when I saw the minimal footprint of the facility on this lot. I know there's some challenges with the grading, with the height of Warwick and the depth of Moor Park Road, a little bit of a challenge there, but I honestly was expecting to see something curb-to-curb-to-curb. And it was a pleasant surprise, because I know with a number of these facilities that we have seen over the years, trying to make the most of it, which I understand, we have a desperate need. We need rooms, we need beds, we need facilities. However, it's nice to see that this can work on the site that you have there, and it's not overbuilt, nicely landscaped, nicely appointed, and still be able to accommodate the need. So I certainly appreciate that, and I think it'll do well for the community. So with that, we have a motion on the board, so would the recording secretary please prepare
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you for being part of our community, and we're going to roll right into our next item, 7C. So would the recording secretary please read into the record item number 7C?
Hearing advertises required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item number 7C. Regarding subject: New Science Building at California Lutheran University for case number The applicant is California Lutheran University, and the location is 3250 Pioneer Avenue.
Thank you very much. And this evening, I think we have Ms. Pam Leopold to give us a presentation, our senior planner. Ms. Leopold, good to see you again. If you care to give us your report, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening, Chair Nichols and members of the commission. For consideration this evening, project by California Lutheran University, special use permit, major modification, 2017-70471. Request is to adopt a final negative declaration and approve the project. Essentially, California Lutheran University is requesting construction of the three-story science building on South Campus. There's an increase in height from the 35-foot maximum height to 52.7 average height to install two on-building signs, which are integrated into the building architecture, and to allow the shared use of parking, existing parking spaces, convert existing accessory building to a trash recycle enclosure, and install an emergency generator in an enclosed The building will be located on the South Campus. This sort of shows the vicinity of Cal Lutheran University and of the South Campus, and essentially the building will be centered in the heart of the academic precinct. This slide shows an aerial view of the southern portion of the campus, and the arrow points to a landscaped area, which is vacant at this time, proposed for the science building. There's an existing Amundson Science Center building directly to the north, and eventually those two will be connected with a bridge to the second floors of each building. This slide shows a little bit more information with regard to the proposed science building, the existing Amundson Science Center, Building D, which is classrooms, one of the older buildings on campus, and the Swenson Center for Behavioral and, let's see, it's Behavioral Sciences. This is a Spies-Borman building, which is mainly education and technology. So as you can see, it's pretty much in the very middle of the academic precinct. With regard to the building heights increase, the maximum building heights for the PL zone is 35 feet. Most buildings on campus are 35 or less. The building height increase to 52.7 feet for the average height is needed because of the function of the building. It's a science building, and they need to have laboratories for research and technical uses, teaching uses. So additional duct space is needed for the fume hoods. There is a proposed second-story connection between the new science building and the adjacent Amundson Science Center building to the north. The roof equipment screen is 10 feet in height, and that's also taken into account for the total height of the building. And the building footprint is minimized with less building materials, because you're concentrating that footprint into one particular area. This slide shows the west building elevation. You can see the existing, or the proposed, second-story connection. This will connect the second story of the new science building with the second story of the Amundson Science Center. Previous height increases on California Lutheran University campus, as I mentioned, most of the campus buildings are 35 feet or less in height. The Samuelson Chapel, the chapel spire is approximately 75 feet high with a seven-foot high cross on top of the spire. Trinity Hall is also on South Campus. It was a 220-bed residence hall, and the average height was 36.3 feet, 36 feet with three inches, and the highest point was 49 feet, eight inches. And that was pretty much a stairwell. Grace Hall and Potenberg Hall sit between Trinity Hall, so the building was stepped. The stadium light fixtures are on North Campus, and they're currently at 60, they were at 60 feet proposed, and they were approved for 103 feet. And the clock tower feature, which is also on North Campus, it is approximately 70 feet in height. The photo simulations were requested by staff for certain particular areas from public streets, intersection of Olson Road and Mount Clef Boulevard, the Mount Clef Boulevard and Faculty Street, Faculty Street and Pioneer Avenue. and Faculty Street, Faculty Street and Pioneer Avenue. This particular slide shows the intersection of Olson and Mount Clef Boulevard. And you can sort of see in the distance the photo simulation of the science building, and you have bony ridge further to the southwest. So there's no silhouetting of the building height. With regard to this slide, it's Mount Clef Boulevard and Faculty Court View. And again, you'll see a portion of the building, but you won't see the overall massing of the Again, this is a Faculty Court View. You can see the building again. But as I mentioned, it's pretty much centered within the academic precinct, and there's minimal massing from public streets. Again, the Pioneer Avenue View, there is a portion of the building visible, but again, it's minimized. With regard to the height increase, staff feels the height increase is in keeping with the intent of the PL Zone. The function of the building requires the additional ducting for the laboratories. The Amundson Science Center has a higher finished floor, and the second-story bridge connection will connect to the new science building. The photo simulations show the limited visibility for the internalized building location, and there is no silhouetting. With regard to the architectural review, the building's exterior materials are smooth stucco, brick veneer wall accents, clear glass, aluminum storefront, metal window, uning accents, and integrated roof screens for mechanical equipment. This is pretty well consistent with the existing surrounding buildings. Again, the applicant has redesigned the building from the original pre-app and accommodated a new type of heating/cooling system in order to lower the building height. With regard to the parking signage and landscaping, the shared parking is such that there's no net increase in the number of students, faculty, and staff, which are currently in the Amundson Science Center building. Most of the classrooms there are pretty cramped, and essentially, the laboratories in the new science building will, most of the students will be transferred over to the new science building once it's in operation. The two on-building signs are integrated into the building architecture, one's on the south side, and the other sign is on the east side of the building. Landscaping for the site involves no oak or landmark trees, and the existing trees to be removed will be either preserved and protected in place. With regard to community outreach, the university has information on their website regarding the proposed science building. And they've also included discussions and updates with the adjoining neighbors at three different community meetings. The first one was June 23, 2015. The last one was May 23, 2017. With regard to the environmental review, negative declaration, a negative declaration was prepared in accordance with CEQA. No public comments were received on the draft negative declaration, and the project will not have a significant effect on the environment. Recommendation is that the planning commission approve the project based on the findings and conditions included in the model resolution. This concludes staff's report, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you very much for the report. Any questions from commissioners at this Okay, I have a few, not many, just a few. I didn't write down the page, but on condition number 50, it appears to be a combination of perhaps two conditions. I don't know if that was intentional because there's two bold headings in it.
Excuse me. There should have been a separate condition, 51, for onsite drainage design. That was a typo.
Okay.
So it should be separate.
There is a 51 already, so this will be 50 and a half?
Fifty and a half, yes.
Okay, all right. So just want to make sure that it is actually two separate conditions, though.
Okay.
And I know we have a master plan for the university, and probably a parking calculation that goes along with the process. My question is, when you add 47,000 square feet, and you say, "We're not going to add students. We don't need any more parking," it seems like it kind of contradicts that if you have a new building, and you have more seats, and you have more classrooms, you're going to have more cars. But that's not the case. So I'm just wondering how that calculation is made such that you can make, not you personally, but how one could make such a claim that there will be no additional traffic or no additional cars?
I believe the applicant can better answer that question. They do have some additional information regarding parking. There is a parking program that California Lutheran University has been using. And essentially, this building, this new science building, will essentially provide the laboratories, the laboratory space, which is very compromised in the existing Amundson Science Center building. So it's really just a transfer of the students and faculty into the new building. It's really not adding any new students or faculty or staff to the university.
Okay, all right.
It's for existing use.
Be anxious to hear their comments on that. Thank you. I think most of my other questions are probably related to that, so I will wait for the applicant to come forward then and perhaps answer those questions at that time. If there's no other question. Okay, Commissioner Newman, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for your presentation, Ms. Leopold.
You're welcome.
I just have one question regarding the donor signs. The report mentions there'll be two donor signs approved administratively later on. I did not see an artist rendition of those signs. There is a picture of a sign in large letters on attachment two of the packet saying the word "Science Building." Is that, will that text remain there? Will the donor names be the same size as that text? What will the donor signs look like?
Essentially, one of the donor signs will be integrated into that building wing wall, which is called out as "science building." Once a donor is identified, their name will be on that wing wall. And essentially, the signs will be through administrative processing, through a sign permit, and staff will review the, essentially, the height of the letters, the actual location with regard to other improvements, and the colors and materials for the sign.
So if Mrs. Smith, let's say, gives, I hope for Cal Lutheran's sake, $100 million to the school, would there be a sign saying "Smith Building" in letters?
It would be the "Smith Science Building."
Right. But my question is whether the letters that say that, "Smith Science Building"
Yes.
Would be more or less to scale as shown on attachment two?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And is that, sorry, one more question. Is that, if it is to scale, is that in keeping with the city's sign lettering regulations?
We would review the sign at that time and determine whether or not it met the intent of the sign ordinance. It depends on the building frontage and other particular issues, such as, as you said, massing.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions at this point? All right, then we will move to the applicant. And I have three speaker cards, the only three cards that I have. And I have Ryan Van Omeren, Valerie Crooks, and then Dr. Chris Kimball for questions only. So you collectively have 15 minutes. Just please kindly give your name and city of residence for the record, please.
All right, thank you. My name is Ryan Van Omeren. I work at California Lutheran University. I live in Thousand Oaks also. I'm the Associate Vice President for Operations and Planning, and thank you very much, commissioners and chair, for having us and seeing our project tonight. We're very excited to bring this project forward. It's been a long time coming, as you can see on the slide, I think. This building has been talked about at the university since 1998. I see they're going to get that up. And it's gone through a long and arduous process, meeting with faculty, doing the fundraising. Here we go, on Slide 2. And finally, here, 20 years later, at fruition in front of Planning Commission, we're very excited to be here. My role in Cal Lutheran involves construction supervision. Valerie Crooks is our senior project manager, and she will be delivering the majority of the presentation. We'll be able to zero in on aspects of the building. She's a registered civil engineer and a longtime employee of Cal Lutheran, longtime worker with city planning. And she and I have been building projects since 2002 for her, 2000 for me, and very happy with the collaboration that we've had with the city and what Cal Lutheran has become because of the leadership at Cal Lutheran, the input with the city and the partnership with the city, and the contractors that have come through. I do want to introduce Chris Kimball that's here. As you mentioned, he's here for questions if you would like to talk about the mission of the university, our strategic plan, things that are beyond my scope. I'm sure he'd be more than happy to deliver a long presentation on any of those topics. We're going to talk, let's see, we went through the process. I won't go through any more details, but again, it's been a 20-year ordeal to bring this project to you, and we're happy to have it here. Moving on, let's talk about STEM a little bit. STEM, I mentioned the community, this particular building, if we can go on to the next slide, obviously has a STEM focus. Many of you probably think of Cal Lutheran as a small liberal arts school, and that is true, but liberal arts clearly includes STEM. We have such majors as biochemistry, microbiology, exercise science, which sounds like maybe it's not arduous, but actually very challenging, curriculum physics, math, and others. In fact, one quarter of our entering freshmen major in STEM. One thing that's special about Cal Lutheran, because of our small class sizes, because of the involvement of our faculty, we know that 73% of our students that enter into one of our STEM programs will graduate with a STEM degree, work all over the world and the country, whether it's Amgen, whether it's in the medical field. We're very proud of that. I can tell you, public schools graduate about 50%. Again, it's 73%, 50% for public schools. This building will, of course, enhance our ability to do that. All right. And again, Valerie will talk about the details of the building. I will say, our Amundson Science Building, we plan to remodel it. We plan to reuse some of the biology labs. But I can tell you, its chemistry spaces, which is approximately half of the building, are not to current codes. I don't want to say they're unsafe, but they're not to current codes. They need to be upgraded, and there's not enough room for an instructor station in those rooms. So if you can imagine teaching a class with our full-time faculty and trying to give these classes in these cramped conditions, that's what the building is all about. We're not trying to grow enrollment with the building. We're trying to provide a better faculty and student experience. All right. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Valerie Crooks, and I guess I'm going to come over there. Is that...
I think I can sit here and take Pam's microphone. I'm Valerie Crooks, as Ryan introduced. I'm senior project manager for Cal Lutheran. My office is in Cal Lutheran's Facilities Department at 60 West Olson, Thousand Oaks. I'm pleased to present the new science building to you here today. We've been working on this for quite some time. This building is intended to meet a number of strategic plan goals for the university. First off is to really enhance interdisciplinary programs between the sciences. And we do that by co-locating our biology, chemistry, and exercise science programs in this building. The second is to really offer the ability to do student-faculty research. And this leads, anecdotally and with actual hard data, to employment skills for our graduates. When you can prove to an employer or a higher level of education that you're aspiring to, that you are able to do undergraduate research, you have much better employment opportunities. This building provides nine student-faculty research labs and the support facilities that they need. We do not have that in our existing building. Our third goal is to modernize our facilities. As Ryan mentioned, we need the upgraded labs and the support facilities. We need to be compliant with current building codes, the lab ventilation requirements, and chemical storage. We also need ADA-accessible and flexible workspaces. And that's not just for people with permanent disabilities, but we have a number of student athletes. They can have temporary disabilities as well due to sports injuries. One of the things that was pointed out when we presented this building at the DAB meeting in January by one of the board members was that when he was a student at Cal Lutheran and had classes in our existing science building, the workstations were not ADA-accessible. And right now, we have no way to remodel those, to make those accessible. So that is one of the fundamental goals of this building. And also, near and dear to our hearts and facilities, is to provide energy-efficient, state-of-the-art building systems. We want to put science on display. The way that we do that is providing a window into the labs. You can't see into the labs in Amundson. They're very closed spaces. You can't tell if there's anything interesting happening there. Our corner windows for, in the new building, at the lab entrances, will show science happening. And lastly, but not least, we need the technology and infrastructure to support new analytical equipment, teach people how to use the latest and greatest that's coming out there in terms of technology and analysis. We will be providing wireless and wired internet connectivity for data collection and storage, which is now one of the big things in analysis, and also the electrical infrastructure that we need in the building for current and future new equipment. So our new modern facilities have evolved through quite a design process, and I'd just like to provide some more detail on the building height. In 2015, we started design work with A.C. Martin Architects and went with a three-story design in order to retain some of the area in the academic core for additional science facilities in the future. We also wanted to eliminate unnecessary sprawl and additional foundations, additional low-rise structures. A.C. Martin and Associates and their consulting engineers were recommending a 15 and 1/2-foot floor-to-floor height for the building, and then there was added height for roof screening. Now, they were working with a very traditional air handler HVAC system with very large duct systems. And this was giving us a 63 and 1/2-foot building height when you added up everything. So we actually went through a pre-application process with the city planning department in 2015, and they reinforced our feeling that we really wanted to move to the latest and best technology in terms of HVAC systems. And we also wanted to see if we could get the building height down. We changed architects. Our local architects, Rasmussen and Associates, out of Ventura, perhaps more sensitive to height considerations here locally in Ventura County. We retained the three-story building design and the desire to retain the area around the building, but we went with a building that, and building systems, that's now very much more sustainable. We have energy savings, reduced construction materials. But in the meantime, we picked up an additional requirement from the fire up an additional requirement from the fire department requiring access around the building for their ladder truck because we are now three stories. So looking at the building carefully, Rasmussen and Associates felt that they had to keep the first floor height of 15-and-a-half feet roughly, and that was required to get the bridge from the second floor in the new building to land on the second floor of Amundsen. Biology is on the second floor of the new building. The biology departments are leaving some faculty members and facilities over there in Amundsen. They need to be able to communicate effectively as a department. But they were able to reduce the second floor and third floor heights to about 14-and-a-half feet. And then with reductions in the height of the HVAC equipment on the roof, due to the use of the modern technology and not the old technology, we were able to achieve an overall 10-foot reduction in the building height in response to our pre-application So before I get on to parking, I just want to mention that we feel that now is the time. This project has been planned for many, many years. We now have most of the funds for the project, and I'll make a comment about that with respect to the signage. The faculty and students are very excited about the project. Some faculty thought they would retire before they saw this project come to fruition, and we are ready to move into construction in 2018, in 2018, before costs increase very much more. So we do respectfully ask that you would approve this project. With respect to parking, we would like to point out that this building is a little bit different. It is a complement to Amundsen, as Ryan was mentioning, and we're taking all of our wet labs out of Amundsen and putting them into this new building. This is from a sustainability point of view. This is wonderful. We'll see reduced water consumption. Obviously, energy consumption will go down with the modern systems. In Amundsen, unfortunately, we still have to make a vacuum for science experiments by running water. This is just very bad on many different levels. So we'll have a distributed vacuum system, compressed air in the new building, all the things you need, easily accessible. So with taking all the lab facilities out of Amundsen, we're planning to remodel it, as Ryan mentioned, and consolidate departments back in there, retain classrooms. Our lecture hall will still be there. We'll still have the offices for adjunct faculty that we need, but it will become more of the dry sciences and as an adjunct to the other buildings. So we will not be increasing our student population at all, and the faculty that we have are the faculty that will be in the combined buildings. They'll just be in much better accommodations. We currently have available on the campus 2,578 paved parking spaces. We do count regularly, and we also do surveys regularly. We are blessed to have a campus safety group that are able to do these parking counts for us. Typically, they'll do a couple counts a few times during a day over a sample period for us. The last count indicated what we already knew, being on campus, that our peak demand hours are between 10:30 in the morning and about 4:30 in the afternoon. Typically, on Tuesdays and Thursdays are our peaks. Those are the lab days when everybody comes to campus. We find that we have very few open spaces on South Campus, but we do have a few open spaces in the big administration lot at the corner of Mount Clapham Olson on the south side. But we also typically have about 100 open paved parking spaces in our Gilbert Sports and Fitness Center lot, which is on the north campus, just an easy walk across Olson Road from the south campus. So anecdotally, we can tell you, we would say that we had a parking problem if students were having to park up in our parking lot further to the north off of Campus Drive around facilities. We don't see that. We know that from the surveys, we still have open spaces. So I think that what we're exhibiting is really a changing demographic. People are bringing fewer cars to campus. We know that particularly staff and faculty are taking alternate forms of transportation, biking, walking. Some people take the train and take the shuttle from the station in Moore Park. So we seem to be in a very much shared parking type of a situation where people are coming and going, and it's all balancing out for us really quite nicely. With respect to the signage, and I will say this on behalf of President Kimball, we are still open for fundraising, and we are still looking for a very large donor who would like to put their name on the building. We have a number of donations, but they are not at the level we would typically use to provide a naming opportunity for a building. So we do anticipate there will be a name there. Pam has periodically asked me about that. It will not be known as the Science Building forever. It could be known as the Smith Science Center, the Smith Labs. It'll depend, I think, a lot on how long the name is and what we want to call it, how we look at that wing, that feature wing wall, and how we would arrange the lettering there. But it's all, our standard campus signage is very softly illuminated, LED backlit, brushed aluminum letters. There'll be two donor signs. Ken thanked me. We did negotiate with Deputy Alvarez from TOPD on how many signs we needed to have on the building and agreed on an address number on each one of the four sides and just the names on two sides. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any immediate questions from staff? Okay, I have, excuse me, from the Commission. Mr. Park, did you have a comment or question?
I did. I just wanted to interject that the Planning Commission Rules and Procedures requires a vote of the Planning Commission to continue the meeting past 11:00 p.m. So in light of the time, we're roughly a little less than 10 minutes before that. If the Commission could address whether they would like to continue the meeting past 11:00 or not, or move this item to a later meeting, that would be greatly appreciated at this time.
I think we should probably keep it going, but I'll defer to my Commissioners. If someone would care to make a motion to continue the process and get this wrapped up tonight.
I think to do, not make a motion, is just mean. Dr. Kimball's been giving me some eyes throughout the night. I think we need to finish this thing now. No.
Mr. Pletcher, if you would, please give us a motion.
I'm happy to make, I'm happy to make a motion to continue the meeting past 11 o'clock to finish what's left on our agenda, including the current case that's open.
Thank you, sir. Would the Recording Secretary please prepare us for a vote? I think this is the approval of the item, which we're not working on yet.
Should we do an oral?
We can.
Just to speed things along.
If we can do an oral vote for this particular item, that would be appreciated.
Oh, I'm good for that. Yeah, let's do it. If you could please do a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lanson?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Commissioner Pletcher?
Yes.
Chair Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. I did have a few questions, kind of following up on the parking. I guess my question is, with the master plan, with the build-out, all the different things that are happening, what then are the triggers for more parking? If it's not a new building, if, you know, what does trigger the requirement for additional parking? Is there a student population trigger? You know, what is it that causes that to happen?
I'll answer that. Campus Safety also reports to me, by the way. It is based on the surveys that we do. I can tell you, it's a relatively emotional issue on campus, too. If we were seriously underparked, although I can tell you, people right now would tell you, because they have to walk more than a half a block to get to their office, that we are underparked. But I can tell you, we have no cars that park in the neighborhoods. We have no cars that park on the side streets that are not directly surrounded by our campus, and we use that as our criteria whether to make parking changes. We do make adjustments at time. We say, okay, this has to be, we need more residential parking, as an example. That happened. So we'll set aside some of those and sort of relocate groups on campus. We do that on a relatively constant basis. We monitor it on a constant basis. And we would add, if we needed to, for a host of reasons, one of just the expense and the sustainability of putting a whole bunch of asphalt on the ground, we try not to do so.
So is this really a university decision as opposed to a city decision as to when parking is required?
The, okay, so our parking plan overall is a part of the documents that the city has approved in the past. Our practice of surveying it all is our own program.
Okay. Then just from my past experience, typically on a campus setting, there are certain milestones when you get certain thousand square feet, you know, whether it be 500,000, you know, 700,000, that there are certain triggers that dictate parking requirements. I just was wondering if there's something like that built into the master plan?
Yeah. We would, for a variety of reasons, want to stay away from such criteria. I can tell you, there's a lot of things happening on campuses right now with online learning, with weekends intensives, with evening labs for particular students, with evening programs for bachelor students that didn't quite finish their degrees. So today's algorithm for Cal Lutheran would have to be a lot more sophisticated than that, and I honestly would say that I think our best methodology is our method of surveys and parking counts. And I will point out again, though, we really do keep the cars out of the neighborhood. I think you would hear that, or the city would hear that if we did not.
I'll just add that the way that our parking is set up and has been entitled in the past, we have a ceiling of parking that would be desirable based on our commencement parking requirements. However, we find we can park commencement because we're creative, and we use our existing grass fields for parking, and we have a very large bio-retention basin on the north campus. We also park down in there. So through that sort of creative use and an old field that's on South Campus, we can get a lot of cars accommodated when we have large events. The way that the north campus entitlement was set up in 2002, 2003, it was set up phases as different sports facilities were built, then additional phases of parking were to be built on the north campus. Now, obviously, for those of us that like to walk and bike around, I mean, this is great. You get your exercise, you go to South Campus, you know, everything is great. A lot of people don't really care for that. So we tend to look more to what's going on in South Campus and manage our parking and what's along the sort of Olson Road area carefully to satisfy our student population, faculty, and staff parking. But again, we are managing to park everybody, and we still have vacant spaces based on our surveys.
Okay.
And our President just noted also, of course, the Rams development put in roughly 200 spaces, and at the time that lease expires, depending on what happens with the city and others, we would pick up those spaces.
Okay, okay. Another question. The footprint of the structure appears to be where all the landscaping is, and there's a vacant lot to the south of it, which is proposed to be landscaped. It seems like the vacant lot would be ideal spot to put the building. I'm sure there's like a master plan there. Why is that the case? And then, secondly, a follow-up, you have three nice mature ash trees on the northwest corner there, which appear to be all intended for removal. Was the footprint of the building something that couldn't be adjusted to accommodate those existing trees?
So our master plan called originally, starting in 1999, for the second phase of the sciences to be located immediately south of Amundsen. And in fact, that was always envisioned, even when Amundsen was built. The electrical infrastructure that was built for Amundsen was oversized to take a second building. We do have a very strong feeling from the faculty that they need to be in close proximity. They will be sharing chemicals. Chemicals will be primarily in the new science building. They'll need to be transported for certain classes over to Amundsen. We're talking like very small amounts of reagents and things for standard chemistry experiments. But they do need that communication that's facilitated via the bridge. The landscaping that was put in south of Amundsen was really just a placeholder. When we took out an existing, what we call a chicken coop building, E-Building, some people may remember that delightful era, when we had the E-Building there, south of Amundsen, a paved courtyard that was in delightful condition, and then F-Building, which we just demolished at Christmas break, and then south of F-Building was G-Building. G-Building was demolished when we built the Swenson Center for the Social and Behavioral Sciences. So this is where the sciences were always planned to be, in the heart of the campus, surrounded and anchored by the humanities and languages and other aspects of a liberal arts institution. At some point in time, we hope to have the funding available to take down D-Building. At that point, there would be another building built that would be more L-shaped that would wrap around the D-Building site and to the south of the new building. One of the things that we have been able to do as a project management group, and I will give the credit to Christine Kano, our project and space manager, she was able to find a nursery in Somus that is going to come in and take the smaller trees. They're going to dig them out, box them up, and reuse them, sell them. So that is really tremendous. The ash trees, I made the design team jump through hoops to see if we couldn't save them because it was something that I was interested in doing. But unfortunately, it didn't matter how we moved the building around. This three-story building with its structural steel frame has an enormous foundation footprint, and it just didn't matter how we moved it, what we did with it, we were going to end up taking out half of their root ball, and that just makes a very unstable tree. So at that point, it was, you know, I had to sort of throw in the towel and say, okay, fine, we can't save these trees anymore. The palm trees, unfortunately, nobody wants. The big ones are too tall to transplant, apparently. That's unfortunate. Nobody wants those queen palms. I think some of it may be a reaction to the Thomas Fire. Everybody saw those go up like Roman candles, and I'm pretty convinced that the fire department would tell us to take them out, even if we weren't taking them out voluntarily.
Thank you. That helps to clear up a few things. I know there's always some constraints that are between the lines that we can't tell in the report. Appreciate that. I see no other questions, or we complete with the questions? Okay. I guess that's it, then. Now, I have no additional speaker cards other than the team that was presented. I did have some written statement cards, which I've passed along. We had 12 statement cards. All were in favor or support. So unless you want to, you know, is there any additional comments from staff based on what you've heard that you wanted to clarify anything?
No further comments.
No further comments? You have additional five minutes rebuttal to come up and say anything if you care to for the applicant?
We're good.
Okay, all right. Dr. Kimball, everything's good?
Good. It's late.
Okay, I, we all know that.
Thank you.
That's fine. Just to want to pass up an opportunity. Okay. With that, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open up for discussion or a motion. Mr. Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After considering what a, what sounds like a wonderful and amazing project and a great expansion to the Science Department and something that I know was a long time coming for the university and really begins to fully develop the university as, you know, I know you have spent a long time imagining, I'm very happy to make the recommendation to adopt the final negative declaration, number 2018-70123, and make a motion to approve SUMJ 2017-70417 based on the findings and conditions described in the model resolution that's included in our packets. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Pletcher. Any further comments? Well, I'll just add a couple of comments, and, oh, did you have something, Mr.?
I did.
Go ahead, Commissioner Newman.
Okay, thank you. I also strongly support STEM and STEAM education and welcome this addition to the already impressive CLU campus, so I will support this motion. I do have a couple of caveats. I do have a couple of caveats for the commission, not, not about this project, about your educational mission, about this building, but about this building in the context of the larger community. Fifty-two and a half, fifty, almost 53 feet is quite a bit over 35 feet. I'm relieved to hear that there are already taller structures at CLU. As Ms. Leopold mentioned in her presentation, the chapel spire is 75 feet, and the stadium light fixtures are more than 100 feet tall. So it's not as if this is a record-setting tower. It's, it's, in fact, is smaller than structures the campus already has. But at the same time, it is quite a bit larger than the city's 35-foot limit. It is quite a bit larger than almost any, any other structure in Thousand Oaks. We, as a commission, did approve an assisted living facility that had an average height, I think, of almost 50 feet, but a couple of special cases there. One, that's at the very edge of town, right at the top of the Cano grade, and two, that's right against a hillside. And I realize there's no hillside impact there. I'm a little bit concerned about precedent. I think it's not a showstopper here. I, I will support this, but I think we should be cognizant of the fact that we have rules, and our job is most, for the most part, to have waivers to those rules, be the great exception to the rules. This, this, in my opinion, is merited for the reasons I've said, but I, I don't want to hear someone coming to us in two weeks and saying, well, you gave CLU 52 feet, so why can't we have 57 feet? Or why can't we build 65 feet? Because you did that over here. You've put a lot of thought into this. You're doing this in the context of something that is not the tallest building and not, not sticking out, given the surrounding environment. And I appreciate that. And again, I appreciate your motion, your mission, and what you're doing with this. So thank you for doing this, and I will support the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Certainly. Anything else? Just to add a few comments as well. I also, too, was considering the, the height issue. However, I felt because of the institution itself and the number of the, I guess, precedents that have already been set there, or even at Amgen, or this very building in which we occupy here, that are exceeding the 35-foot limit, particularly because it's at the center of that part of the campus, that it's really surrounded, and you really have to look to find what building it is that's a little bit higher than everything else, somewhat masked just by the campus itself. So I wasn't as concerned as I may have been if it were a standalone project. The other thing I was reflecting on is how much that campus has changed since I first stepped on campus to take classes in 1984, and indeed, take classes in building E and F and G with the chicken coops. And it's, those, those buildings weren't quite as tall as this one was. In fact, you almost had to duck to get in those buildings. But it's, it's changed significantly over the years, and I think the university has matured along with the city, and it's been a wonderful relationship. Again, I can remember back in the day when the old gymnasium was the largest venue in town to hold any type of an event, and everything that was happening was happening on the campus. I think that's still the case. Everything of, except for perhaps some shows here, happens on campus. So it's been a continued relationship. I think it's going to continue to get stronger. I appreciate the, the sensitivity to some of the issues we've brought up. I think there is room for some wiggle room here and there, and Commissioner Newman brings up some good points for that. Appreciate your trying to, you know, address those and not hide them, but to be upfront about that. So we look forward to that continuing relationship. So if there's no other comments, the recording secretary could please prepare us for a vote?
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much, and thank you for staying with us this full five hours tonight.
Thank you.
You get extra bonus points. Okay, we'll move on to department reports. Mr. Parker, it says none. Do you have anything to add to that?
I do not.
Thank you, sir. Item nine, commission comments and AB 1234 reports. Look down the aisle, Mr. Pletcher?
We got to do this, so just bear with us. I know it's the late hour, but.
Please.
I had the great ability, great opportunity, I should say, to attend the Planning Commission Academy through the League of California Cities. Very good discussion over a period of three days, in which we touched on a lot of the issues facing California. Housing was among the largest one. Wildfires was another great topic. One of the main things that spoke to me was they did reach out, and there was a lot of question and discussion as to the millennial mindset, and what are millennials thinking? Where are they going? What are they doing? That obviously spoke to me. Apparently, I was one of maybe five in the entire academy that was a millennial. But it is an important discussion because, I mean, like we just saw from our, our previous applicant, we are going to have a new set of students coming through in this, you know, STEM-focused, and we have Amgen here, and we need to begin to understand what they're going to look for as they graduate CLU, because I know it's, it's a perfect synergy if done correctly. They can move right to Amgen and hopefully find a place to live here in Thousand Oaks. But it's always a very encouraging time. I was very encouraged to hear comments and other speakers and other issues that planning commissions are facing, and at the same time, we're incredibly grateful that we live and are where we are because a lot of the housing issues, as we previously discussed here, are just simply not going to apply to us because we're not near any density bonus transit-focused housing. So we're, we're very fortunate, and I count our blessings in, in that regard. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to first welcome Mr. Parker to our, our crew here. Appreciate everything you put into the process and, again, answering our questions. I also want to thank Commissioners Pletcher and McMahon for putting up with my driving to the Commissioner Academy and not complaining too much. One thing to let the rest of everybody know, we actually went to this wonderful place in Monterey that, as we got there, had no power. And the previous day, they had no water. So here are 400 planning commissioners with no power and no water, trying to talk about how to make their cities better. So it was rather odd to sit there and see that happening. Very concerned, a lot of the communications discussions were ways that the federal and state government are trying to diminish our local control, find ways to deal with density, deal with housing, deal with everything imaginable they can think of, including possibly modifying Prop 13 at some point, or modifying lots of things to find ways to deal with things they want to, but not in ways we may want to as a city. One of the main things that I came away from it, by the way, was our need to update our general plan. Lots of cities are finding ways to get around some of the mandates that are being imposed by updating their plan to deal with neighborhood guidelines and other things that I think we really need. There's a cost. I know the city council's discussed it, and there's a definite cost, and that's an issue that has to be considered, but updating our plan, I think, is a very, very important thing to do, to make sure that we're protecting our city as much, as much as possible with regard to those neighborhood guidelines. And last, I just came away with an idea of the fact that we're doing a lot of the things that they were talking about, where you actually are already implementing them, in terms of community outreach, in terms of having the very discussions we had tonight. So it's kind of nice to see that we're hopefully a little bit on the cutting edge. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner McMahon?
I will make this short, due to the hour and due to my cough. I will echo what my two fellow commissioners did. It was an enjoyable conference. We, we had a lot of discussion about issues, not too many resolutions, just a lot of discussion. So hopefully, as I said, our city seems to be on the forefront of looking for the resolutions to these issues, and I think we're very lucky that we are the city of Thousand Oaks, and we are living here and working here. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move to staff update. Item 10, follow-up items, announcements, incoming, upcoming issues?
Uh.
Yep, yes, here, Ryan. Mr. Parker, go, go for it.
Nothing from a staff perspective in relation to that. I do have some comments in relation to upcoming planning commission meetings when you get to item 10B.
Please, sir. Go ahead.
As you all know, the May 30th meeting, excuse me, the April 30th meeting was canceled. We're having a meeting on May 14th. Currently, there's tentatively three items on that agenda, which include the downtown core master plan, a potential Dave and Buster site, and we are addressing lights related to the Lexus facility on our auto row. Between now and the break, there's roughly three other planning commission meetings besides that. Based on the projects we have coming forward, we may be looking to cancel one of those, but we'll keep you abreast as that develops.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lanson?
One last thing to remind everybody, I will not be here at the May 14th meeting.
Commissioner Newman?
Thank you. And again, welcome, Mr. Parker. Very glad to have you here. Just a quick request. In previous times, we've had a written notice of upcoming meetings. There was just a, a grid that, that showed, here, here are the scheduled dates with the items that are tentatively set for each one, understanding they can change, but it's helpful to have that in written form. If we could reinstate that practice, I, I think we'd all find that helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? If not, I'm ready to adjourn if you are. Okay, adjournment, we are going to adjourn to 6:00 PM on May 14th, 2018. Good night, Thousand Oaks.